Evening, everyone. We're just gonna wait a couple moments till everybody gets here. Number of us who just had another meeting that just was ending at six, so it's um quick turnaround. Waiting for... We're still waiting for... Oh, gosh, most of the committee. Evening, Karen. Who are we still waiting for?
Going to eat again really fast.
Yeah, I'm gonna eat somewhere in the middle of the meeting at some point. I don't know. If my screen goes off, it just means I'm eating.
I'll take a few more bites.
Yeah.
Oh, um, this is recording?
It's not recording, but can... And... I wanna share with you guys that a couple members of the community have asked to present during the uh public hearing, and I said budget hearing, and I told them that we wouldn't be allowing slides to be presented. It's a public hearing, so people can speak, but we wouldn't, um, so you may be receiving some uh, some slides from people via email, and it's... Evening Caroline, thank you for coming. So we have uh... Am I missing anyone? Judy, do you know if Ellen's going to be able to make it?
Unfortunately, Ellen is ill today and is unable to make it.
Okay, um, so that is everyone. I'm going to, um, with everyone's permission, I'm gonna start the webinar, and then we'll go live in a moment. Evening, everyone. We're just going to give everyone a moment to come in to be an attendee who would like to. Give about uh, there's still attendees is rising fast, so I'll give it about thirty seconds more till it settles off. WinCam, if you can hear me, are you ready to start recording?
WinCam is broadcasting audio right now and just waiting for you to call to order.
Perfect, thank you. WinCam, if you could, uh, we would like to call the meeting to order. If you could, um, give me a sign when we are being recorded. Perfect, uh, thank you very much. Um, so I'd like to call to order, uh, the Winchester School Committee meeting. This is actually, we are starting with our budget hearing. Our budget hearing is something that we do every year, um, in anticipation of approving the um, uh, budget put forward by Dr. Evans and um, and Central Office. Uh, I will, after we complete the budget hearing and call to order in regular session, I will go over the full agenda. Really, this is two meetings in one, and we are opening the budget hearing. Um, so with that, I will um, turn it over to Dr. Evans. Uh, I, I guess I should say upfront a couple of things. The Dr. Evans is gonna give a presentation, and then, um, members of the community will be invited to ask questions, um, to of Dr. Evans and the budget put forward. Uh, we will have full um, public comment during our regular session. So if your question or comment is not about the budget, I'd ask politely that you um, hold it until um, the regular public comment, which will be um, uh, in uh, whenever we finish the public hearing. So um, thank you for that. Sorry, Dr. Evans. I turn it over to you.
Sure, good evening. Uh, could you share a screen with me, please, Brian?
Yes, uh, all panel on? You should, I think you should have...
Okay.
Okay. You should have the right to do that now.
Okay, let's see here. So, good evening. Uh, as uh, as the chair noted, every year, uh, the school district prepares a budget. The process for preparing our budget for the following school year, fiscal year, beginning um, July first, is a lengthy process that involves uh, a fairly similar and predictable pattern, which includes um, looking at enrollment needs, looking at program needs, looking at new initiative needs, and looking at other budget drivers like contracts, um, and known and unknown um, uh, events that might be happening in the following year. As everyone knows, uh, when we prepared our budget for the current school year, we had no idea uh, that we would be in the midst of a global pandemic, um, and that has had a significant influence um, on how we've chosen to spend our funding this year, um, and has really um, produced a budget uh, for the current fiscal year. Uh, that has been uh, very challenging, both in terms of personnel and uh, equipment. Fortunately, we've had some additional allocations of funding from the federal government, um, and that has offset some of our additional costs. So as the school district and the town look ahead to fiscal year twenty-two, we need to take into consideration that the pandemic is likely to continue um, throughout the summer and into the, into the next school year. However, I think it's important to be really clear about our intention, which is to have a normal uh, full attending school year, where all students um, are present together, uh, and not uh, in a hybrid form. That's what this budget is designed to do. We are anticipating that many of the students who left the district this year for homeschooling or private schools, or who had been deferred in terms of initial kindergarten or first grade registration, uh, that those students will return. Nine months from now, um, we could be in a very different position than we are today. It's really difficult to know. But at this point, we're planning for a full typical reopening, um, and uh, and so that's what this budget includes. Last year's approved budget by town meeting was slightly more than fifty-six million dollars, and the proposed budget that I'm going to summarize for you tonight is slightly more than fifty-eight million dollars. Uh, this is um, an increase of slightly above uh, four percent. It's a pretty typical uh, increase for the school department. Um, and as I said, it does include some provision for um, staffing increases that are related to um, anticipated, what we call bounce-back enrollment. The first and biggest category of increase is always contractual adjustments. Uh, next year, we have four currently negotiated union contracts, um, and they all um, have uh, built-in capacity for increases, both in terms of uh, uh, cost of living increase, and then steps in lanes as, as teachers gain more experience and more education. There's a, there's provision for that, and so that's built into this budget. Slightly more than one million of the total costs that we're asking for is based on current staff members continuing in the district, um, and their cost of living or other um, salary adjustments negotiated in their union contracts. Then we have some enrollment-related um, increases and some program improvement um, positions that I'll go through in a little bit more detail. Um, and then a requested new position to support operations that I'll, that I will discuss. So the uh, known cost just to carry us forward with no additional staff members are slightly more than a million, and then about five hundred thousand is for additional enrollment-related program improvement and operation support. On the non-personnel side, on the expense side, the biggest single uh, area where we have a significant increase is special education services. Largely due to the pandemic, but somewhat cyclical in nature, we've seen a pretty significant increase in the number of students who are placed in out-of-district placements beginning last spring. Um, so some of this is catching up in the FY twenty-one budget, um, and uh, anticipated next fall carrying them forward. So there's a pretty significant increase here, where we've um, included about five hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars for anticipated out-of-district tuition um, placements uh, for current known students, and also a five percent tuition increase, which is pretty typical for the special education schools. There's also an increase in special education transportation that's built into our, our transportation contract for the students who are known students. And then a small amount for regular transportation. This is anticipated increase. Whether or not this comes to fruition really depends on school committee's decision about, are we going to continue regular K-12 in-district transportation as we have every other year, except for this year? And how much will the fees uh, need to increase to offset that? Uh, this does not take into account any fee increase. There's a small amount um, in known increases for athletics, um, and uh, and this is pretty typical again. Uh, again, we need to consider whether or not we will um, need to increase fees to offset any of this, and then some miscellaneous um, increases. And so those are all on the non-personnel side. In terms of the specifics for the personnel requests, um, we really have uh, two categories here. We have enrollment-related, um, and then program improvement that's also somewhat related to enrollment. Sometimes it's difficult to categorize some of these positions. Some of them have been asked for for quite some time, um, and um, they are directly related to the number of students in the schools. Uh, and so the first category is uh, three FTEs for elementary teachers uh, for um, deferred enrollment. Uh, what we saw this year was fewer than uh, typical um, number of entering kindergarten and first grade students. So next year, we expect to see our usual number of kindergarten and first grade students, plus the students who had deferred, um, all coming at the same time, um, and that's where we see a need possibly for three additional classrooms somewhere district-wide, depending on where those students um, are assigned, which elementary school. We're also looking for uh, the addition of a dean of students for the high school. This could be categorized under the program improvement or the enrollment-related ask. Uh, this is a position that um, would be the fourth administrator in the fourteen-hundred-and-fifty student um, high school. Um, it's a uh, one-point-oh FTE. Um, it's uh, akin to an associate principal position, and really assists with supporting students and families. This is a position that was asked for a decade ago, when our high school is much smaller. The need continues to be significant. We've in, we've included it in most other budgets and then taken it out because we've had to make some hard choices. It was included in the override ask initially, but again, we didn't get everything that we asked for in the override. We're also looking to add uh, an elementary social-emotional learning counselor. Uh, this would bring us up to um, four uh, four and a half, um, uh, from two and a half to three and a half adjustment counselors with the goal of getting to five uh, adjustment counselors, one for each of our elementary schools or C, or ACL counselors. These are positions that we found to be incredibly valuable, especially during the pandemic, where not only um, are these counselors working across multiple elementary schools to support students and families, they're also supporting staff members, um, and helping us to implement our ruler program, our social-emotional program uh, at the elementary level. And finally, a new position this year in U.S.C., and one uh, that has proven to be essential, I think, as we um, had to tackle a tremendous number of sort of operational challenges with only one person managing that and managing finance, um, and that is uh, we could use an operations um, person to assist with primarily um, facilities to support DPW and the school district, um, to help support the building project. As we entered the Lynch uh, building project, and actually several other, um, in the next couple of years, several other really significant capital improvement projects at Morocco, um, at Lincoln, um, at McCall, all of which require a lot of coordination. It's not typical in a district our size to have one person doing all of operations and all of finance, and uh, we've clearly, pand, the pandemic has really um, made the point to us that we need an additional operations person. We really um, have a significant deficit there. In general, our central office staff is pretty skeletal. Um, we added one part, partial support position uh, to the business office to assist with transportation and building rentals, um, but really have not added to our staff um, in any respect significantly. So this would be an important uh, add um, to, to help support our operations. The last personnel request is contention upon that bounce-back enrollment coming our way and running out of space at Lynch School in particular. Um, we're simply out of classrooms at Lynch. There's no possible place to add another classroom. Uh, what we had anticipated when we put the elevator in at Parkhurst was that we could use the classrooms at, on the lower level uh, to support um, some swing space, and this would be part of a swing space operation where we would bring the four preschool classrooms from Lynch temporarily to Parkhurst until the new Lynch is um, built. This requires some shifting of personnel, um, and some uh, investment in the site, although the classrooms were fairly recently renovated due to a fortuitous flood that happened a couple of years ago. But the personnel needs would require us to have a nurse. Uh, right now, the preschool shares a nurse with the Lynch uh, students, but that nurse has to stay at Lynch to support the other students, and so we'd need to relocate a nurse. So those are the, those are additional requests. So um, in general, the recommended budget is a fairly straightforward budget. Uh, it doesn't include a lot of new positions, um, but uh, it meets our needs, uh, and we look forward to getting feedback on this. Uh, next steps would include discussion of fees. Uh, just to remind everyone, the fees that um, we do um, required to keep our operations going include transportation fees, athletic fees, um, preschool tuition, and um, lunch uh, fees. Uh, and so all of those are up for discussion with the school committee at some point after we see what the resources look like. In about another week or week and a half, we expect to see the governor's budget, to see how much Chapter Seventy-eight the town will receive to support the school district. That will have an impact on um, the town's capacity to fund this budget, and how much, um, we'll continue to monitor enrollment and special education costs. If um, we see by May that our overall enrollment isn't as high as we anticipate, we may be able to pull back on a couple of the elementary positions, for example. We'll be looking at special education costs as more students uh, see the effects of the pandemic. We may see some students who need to be serviced in out-of-district placements. Uh, we have been meeting regularly with representatives from the finance committee and the select board. Uh, we'll continue to do that. Um, and the school committee will vote a preliminary budget, but always has the option to consider uh, adjusting that budget up to and including the night of town meeting, and then in, in town meeting will happen in May. So, so that's the o, overall uh, budget. What I will do after feedback tonight is make any final adjustments before school committee votes on this budget next Tuesday night. Um, and we have a budget narrative book that gives a lot more details about the budget, including historicals by each cost center, each school, um, and I will post that on the website tomorrow as well. Um, I was waiting to see whether we needed to make any uh, adjustments before I um, did so. So I will stop sharing here and um, take any questions from members before we open it up to the general public for questions and comments.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Uh, we have a fiscal year twenty-two budget discussion as a report discussion item during our meeting tonight. Um, so I wanted to point that out to members prior to, if they had any questions about this, that we will be taking this up in probably about an hour. So uh, you can either, if you have questions of Dr. Evans, you can either ask them now, or you can hold them back until that is an agenda item in our subsequent meeting. Seeing no questions from the committee at this time, I would uh, open it up to members of the public. I would point out to members of the public that at current, the budget that's being proposed is um, the superintendent's budget that she's recommending. The school committee has not voted this budget, as she mentioned. So I would ask anyone who has questions of this budget proposal to address them to the superintendent, Dr. Evans. Um, of course, the school committee is welcome to chime in if they feel so inclined. Um, once we vote on this budget next week, it'll become our budget, and we will then um, be more inclined to address questions to, on that, so um...
Point at point of order?
Mr. Nixon.
Since, since uh, in the age of Zoom, we have so many attendees, which is a wonderful thing, could you take a moment, Mr. Chairman, just explain to folks that, you know, we're not voting a budget tonight? We will vote a budget and the town manager's role, um, and that ultimately a budget that comes before town meeting, for those who may not be familiar with the process?
Mr. Nixon, I would be delighted to do so. So on one week from today, which is the twenty-sixth, we will be voting a budget. Um, that will be um, some portion, some version of this budget may be changed slightly, maybe not. That budget will then be sent to the town manager, and the town manager um, will, in her infinite wisdom, decide whether she supports it or supports a lower number or a higher number, and that number will go in the town manager's budget book, and that will go on to the finance committee. The finance committee will then um, do a very thorough job looking at budgets, not just from the school department, but from all the departments in the town. Um, we will meet with the finance committee and present our budget proposal, be that the proposal that um, we put forward, or the one that uh, the town manager puts forward. But there'll be a lot of discussions back and forth. The finance committee will then um, put forward their own budget on the yellow sheet, which is, we'll go to town meeting, and that will be the budget that's voted for by town meeting. Um, that may look like our budget. It may look like the superintendent, uh, excuse me, the uh, town manager's budget. It may be something entirely different. Um, and there are times in the past where we've all been uh, sort of one happy kumbaya moment, and there's times when we've had disagreements, and those honest disagreements are adjudicated by town meeting to make the best decision as far as how to move forward. I don't know if that was in a nutshell enough, uh, Mr. Nixon, um, uh...
Well, the, well done, other than we take it all with a dose of optimism every year. But well, this is, this is one step in a lengthy process, even though Dr. Evans just went through a very detailed presentation. There's a lot of time and steps and others to be engaged in this before a budget um, is voted at spring town meeting. Nice job, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nixon.
Point of order, Mr. Bergstrom.
Just um, can we clarify, are, is the public hearing comments similar to public comment?
So I was going to um, to, to make that point right now. Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. So um, uh, with the uh, we will be following a similar procedure that we use for public comment. With the exception being that we would ask that all questions be addressed on the, any questions be addressed on the budget. Uh, Dr. Evans is free to respond to any questions, as are we, um, and hopefully uh, we will be able to get through as many as we can. Hopefully there, um, if someone has a long comment they'd like to make, they can hold that um, for a public comment, if it's a question about the budget, but they are welcome to do so. We'll try to limit um, questions and comments to three minutes, but my hope would be that they would be quite a bit shorter than that, so that everyone has a chance. If you would like to um, ask a question, you may do so by raising your digital hand. As always, I am actually gonna lower all hands first, so that everyone has a chance to raise their hand, in case others raise their hand first, and then we'll try to take them in the order that they've been presented. So I've just lowered all hands, and I would like to ask um, anybody who would like to speak. I see two people, and so I will be um... This is, is a little different than if we're in person. It would be a lot, much less formal feeling, but it feels very formal when we're on Zoom. But I'm gonna allow to talk um, uh, Mr. Seamus Brady. Uh, with Mr. Brady, if you would state your name and address for uh, the committee, the superintendent?
Absolutely, thank you, Brian. My name is Seamus Brady, and I'm at fifteen Clementis Street, and I just wanted to clarify, I'm speaking in my capacity as a citizen, a father of a four-year-old and a four-month-old, and a candidate for school committee. I'm not speaking in my capacity as a finance committee member tonight. I just wanted to commend and thank Dr. Evans for this budget. Um, I think the dean of students position is extremely important, and so I really am thrilled to see that in there, and, and I hope that the school committee will also find that to be a really important position. Looking at the data over time, and I, I say this not necessarily for the folks on the committee or for Dr. Evans, because you all know, but more for anyone else who might be listening and, and thinking about these positions, Winchester's five-year graduation rate in twenty-seventeen was ninety-nine percent, and in twenty-eighteen, it was ninety-seven percent. And that's the latest data that's available. And so I think the, the dean of students is so important, because when you look at that ninety-seven percent, the rate for students with disabilities and the rate for low-income students is actually less than ninety percent. Um, and so I think having a dean of students is a really key piece, and I, I think that that can really have a huge impact. Furthermore, the elementary positions, the three teachers and the counselor, I think those will be found to be pretty essential too, as we recover from this global pandemic. We have a saying, of course, in education, as, as many of you may know, that students don't drop out in high school. They start dropping out in middle school and even in elementary school. So I think that having those additional supports would just be really, really valuable. So I would just strongly encourage everyone to keep that in mind and, and keep these pieces in the budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brady. I will um, turn you to as attendee status, and I will allow to talk um, Ms. Erica Hoffman. Ms. Hoffman, if you'd state your name and address for the committee, please?
Erica Hoffman, um, seven Fairlane Terrace.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, I just had a question about, um, I'm just sort of thinking forward, because the pandemic is still here. There's still a lot of issues with it. Um, obviously, we're hopeful the teachers will get vaccinated in the next couple of months, but obviously, the children um, are not gonna be vaccinated, you know, this year, because they haven't even started the studies um, yet in them. So I was just wondering whether it makes sense putting a line in there for sort of pandemic um, costs associated with that, because there may not be the situation that we will be able to, like you said, go back to a normal sort of school situation, and then, you know, it comes the full, full-time, and we, we're in the hybrid situation, and, and we have the full, our full remote situation as well. Um, I just want to make sure we have enough money in the budget to c, cover those costs, um, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Dr. Evans?
So I think that's an excellent question, and you know, one we really have wrestled with. Ellen Whittamore and I have really been um, uh, working hard to preserve as much of the additional pandemic-related emergency funding that's come from the federal government, and another allocation is um, coming our way. Not as much as uh, the initial um, allocation um, of uh, close to a million dollars. The town uh, brought in about two million dollars in additional aid. Much of that went to purchase things like um, hundreds of air filters, for air purifiers for the classrooms. Additional Plexi tents, PPE, a lot of the sort of physical needs. And a lot of money was spent by the Department of Public Works to balance every single air handling unit in every school. And there are also significant additional costs on the DPW side for cleaners, contract cleaners and additional personnel. And so most of the personnel, in terms of teachers and support personnel. Really has not been covered by those grants. We, this year, were able to manage a hybrid and a full remote with the same original staffing with very few additions. Although we had a number of leaves that we had to manage as well. And so on the town side, the town manager, I met with the town manager and other department heads today. To talk about an additional budget line in her budget to manage the DPW costs, should they continue through the summer and into the fall. And on our end, we are hoping to have a pretty robust summer program for students. To support some additional learning time, general education, learning time and use the grant funding for that. So we really have several different budgets we're dealing with here. The additional federal grant money is fortunately available for the next fiscal year. That will allow us to support the summer program and into the fall. What, if we need additional expense-related or personnel-related items or positions to support some kind of a different educational model for the fall. It is my hope that the vaccinations that are going to be available in the next few months for K to twelve public educators. Support staff, custodians, bus drivers, et cetera. Will allow us more flexibility in the fall, even if not all of our students can be vaccinated. I think there are some forms of the vaccine that go down to age sixteen, so it's likely that some high school students could be vaccinated. And there could be additional advances for middle school students. I think it's unlikely the elementary students will be vaccinated by the fall. But as I've said all along, the main barrier, two barriers to opening are sort of general community concern about students contracting the virus and passing it to vulnerable adults. And then school personnel contracting the virus or being required to quarantine. And then not being available to teach students in person or remotely. And so if our adults are vaccinated, there's less of a chance that we'll have to close down a school because we have too many close contacts or spread. And the adults are needing to be quarantined and then we don't have enough substitutes to be able to run the school safely. So I'm more confident with the advent of the vaccines, that if our staff members are widely vaccinated. That we'll be able to open in the fall, even if students are not all vaccinated. Part of that is a public health decision that we would make in conjunction with the town health department and the state and the DESE. Regarding whether it's safe to open, what the community spread looks like, what the spread looks like in the Commonwealth and across the country. But it is my hope that we'll be able to fully open and that's what I'm planning for. But I'm also planning some additional resources for other pandemic-related expenses, should they be required. We've already incurred most of the major sort of facility-related expenses, because we've addressed any issues that needed addressing in HEAC. And we've got the schools set up so that if we needed to do hybrid, that piece would be covered. And so, so we've provisioned in a number of different ways, but I think, I think it's an excellent question. And I wish that I had a better sense for what would be the trigger for us to have to pull back and not have a full reopening. And I think that'll become clear in the next couple of months as our adults become vaccinated. So thank you for asking that and it is something that we're thinking very hard about. And that I'll continue to work hard on until the end of June, when I, when I turn the responsibility for this decision over to what will then be somewhat new to school committee and also a new superintendent. But I think we should be well provisioned to deal with any contingency that comes our way. Now that we've made it through this very, very difficult year thus far, pretty intact.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. I will look over and I will remind people that this is the public hearing on the public budget hearing. We will still have a public comment during our regular session, which will follow immediately after this public hearing. So I will ask again if anybody has any questions or comments about the budget for the budget hearing. They can raise their digital hands to do so and I will allow them to speak. Seeing none, can I just, the other members of the committee confirm they see no hands raised?
I confirm, I do not see any other hands.
Okay, so I would request that we have a, thank you, Dr. Evans, I should have thanked you first, I appreciate. I didn't get a chance to do that, thank you for the presentation and we will be discussing this shortly in our regular session. I would like a vote to.
I'm sorry, can I, can I wait? We did receive right at the close of our executive session, just a couple of minutes before this budget hearing, some information from someone who is a panelist. And I just wanted to ask if, were they looking to present it tonight or share it with us, or was that just for us to digest? That was from Ms. Von Mary.
So as I stated to Ms. Von Mary, we wouldn't be able to present anything during our meeting. However, she wanted to send that and I believe it's her intention, well, she's now raised her hands. I believed it was her intention to talk during public comment, but she is welcome to speak now during the budget hearing, so I will.
Just wanted to be sure we didn't lose the opportunity if she was looking, thank you.
I will allow Ms. Von Mary to speak, I believe she had intended to speak during public comment, but I welcome her either time. Ms. Von Mary, state your name and address for the committee?
Yes, my name is Heather Von Mary and I live at twenty-three Loring Avenue. My intention was to speak during open comment, as I did not have any questions for the superintendent at this time.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Von Mary. I will send you back to the attendees. And I will look for a motion to close the public hearing and open regular school session.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like a roll call vote, Ms. Boloniers?
Thank you.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Marchand?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, voters unanimous, so we are closing our public hearing, again, thank you. And we're opening to our regular meeting and I'm going to walk through the agenda tonight. We will have student representatives speak first, we will then move on to public comment. We have several reports and discussion items, we have COVID-nineteen district update. Your fiscal year twenty-two budget discussion, which will come right off of the topic we were just talking about. Lynch MSBA project update, we have an update on draft MCAS testing modification proposals from DESI. We have a draft calendar for twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Then we have several action items, we have vote to approve MOA on unit A instructional coaches. We have vote to approve MSBA Lynch enrollment certification. We have vote to approve the school year calendars for February through June of this school year. Chair report, superintendent report, future agenda items and next meeting dates. So with that, I, my apologies, Ms. Andrews, thank you for coming and welcome. I would love to hear what's happening in your part of the world in the student report.
Hi, thank you again for having me. I know Evan can't make it tonight, he's at a race today for skiing, I believe, even though I know there's not too much snow. So this week is the last week before the end of first semester. So this week is traditionally supposed to be midterm week for the high schoolers, but this year is different. So we actually don't have any midterms. I know some teachers are giving tests this week, just because it's like the end of the quarter. But nothing big, which is a relief, because learning is a lot different this year, as we know. Tomorrow, instead of a half-day remote day, the AA cohort has a full day of class, but from home, so a full remote day. And I believe the BB cohort doesn't have class tomorrow, so that's a bit different. And also, the seniors are putting on a show that they're going to film remotely. It's traditionally called Mr. WHS, but now they call it WHS Royals, so they call it that now. And I know they're going to film that remotely and then have it broadcast out to all the seniors, that's something fun going on at the high school. And also, I know that the cafeteria is giving out free breakfast and lunch for everyone this year. And I know when I walked into school this morning, the cafeteria lunch ladies were giving it out and really enthusiastic about that, so that was really nice of them to do. And yeah, that's about it.
No, thank you very much. I, I want to comment on something and it's a question actually while you're still here for Dr. Evans. I believe the Wednesday change is only at the high school, is that correct? Or is that, I just want to make sure before, because you just stated that and I didn't know. I don't want elementary or middle school families to be thinking of that way, but I'm not certain, so I want to double check.
So I believe, I, I could be wrong, but I thought it was just middle school. That had a change in their schedule because of middle school conferences. So we've had several sort of creative uses of Wednesdays because of elementary and middle school conferences. And so Michelle was doing some nodding, so maybe she has more information about this.
I just wanted to confirm, because I didn't want there to be any confusion. And I would state, please check with your building principal and the communication you get directly from them, but Ms. Bergstrom?
I, I was actually curious if it was happening, my nod was, I'd like to know too. As far as I'm aware, it's only AA at the high school.
So I'll have, I'll have the principals just send out a reminder about what Wednesday looks like for tomorrow. And so parents should not be concerned.
Thank you. Ms. Boloniers?
Oh, I was just going to say, my comment was somewhere between Michelle, between Ms. Bergstrom's and Dr. Evans. That my high schooler has all-day remote class as a part of cohort AA. But then my middle schooler says he has, he does not have anything on the schedule tomorrow because of middle school conferences.
Right, right.
Weekend next week.
And I believe my elementary is a regular Wednesday, half-day Wednesday.
Yes.
Thank you all, I probably opened up more confusion than I would have if I just let it pass, but I didn't want it to possibly pass. Other questions for Caroline from the committee members? Mr. Nixon?
Hi Caroline, not, not to get too detailed about where you are in the process or what standardized tests you took. I'm wondering if you and your peers heard the news this morning. That the college board has announced that effective immediately, it will no longer administer the essay for the SAT and will also discontinue subject tests. And I'm curious if you had heard that or any of your peers had heard that and how students are reacting to that news. That just, it just happened today, sort of hot off the press.
No, I was actually not aware of that, but that's very exciting for future students.
I see a genuine smile on your face at that news.
I actually never took the essay or the subject, any subject test, but I know a lot of my friends did and stressed over that. So it's very interesting that they are not doing that anymore.
Another good example of how COVID-nineteen has forced organizations to move forward on changes they've been thinking about for a while. I was excited to hear that. I'll ask Jason Levine someday later what he thinks about that, since we talk a lot about the pressure of standardized testing. Thank you for joining us tonight, Caroline.
Mr. Nixon, I think they stated the reason for the no-longer subject tests is because AP tests have become pervasive and replaced them essentially.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. Additional questions for Caroline? Seeing none, thank you for coming tonight, thank you for giving us the update. Again, I say this, I sound like a broken record, you're sort of our boots on the ground, we appreciate hearing what's happening at the school. I mean, we all have kids, but they're all, not necessarily all at the high school, so thank you very much. And as always, you are welcome to stay here as long as you'd like, just drop off whenever you want to leave. But as a member of the committee, you're welcome to stay here as long as you'd like. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is public comment. Before we begin public comment, I'd like to remind everyone that public comment is a chance for members of the public to express their opinions on matters under the jurisdiction of the school committee. It's not a dialogue and the committee is under no obligation to respond to comments. As always, we're going to try to limit public comment twenty minutes, so that we have time for discussion tonight. And public comments are limited to three minutes per individual. But the briefer you can be, the more succinct you can be, the more individuals you can hear from. As we did during the public hearing, I will ask you, in a moment, I'll lower all of your digital hands in Zoom. And then I will ask you to raise them and we will elevate you to speak. But I just want to lower them all in advance, so that everyone has a fair opportunity. So having done so, I'll ask if you would like to speak during public comment, if you will raise your hand, your digital hand. And I know at least, I'm pretty sure Ms. Von Mary is interested in speaking. So Ms. Von Mary, I will ask you again for clarity, you have to state your name and address for the committee?
Thank you, Chair. My name is Heather Von Mary and my address is twenty-three Loring Avenue. Also, I just want to give a shout out to Ms. Andrews, she did an excellent job, so thank you, Ms. Andrews, for the update. When I, I just wanted to, first of all, when I was looking at Dr. Evans' presentation for the public hearing. I just wanted to let you know that I was kind of taken aback, that the only analysis for the hearing was really elementary. Because it really only dealt with four percent of the budget, which is the increase. And it didn't review the expenditures that was driving the fifty-six million dollars of the budget, ninety-six percent of the budget. So I wanted you to, going forward, I think it would really be beneficial. And it's a disservice for you not to go into what is that fifty-six million dollars and what makes up that fifty-six million dollars going in the future. Going onward, as per the Mass General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven, which you all know. The school committee shall review and approve the budgets for public education in the district and shall establish education goals and policies for the schools in the district consistent with the requirements of law and statewide goals and standards established by the Board of Education. You are the stewards of the money and are elected to look out for the well-being of our students. In response, that makes you the authority to determine the expenditure within the total appropriation. You are the authority that is the head of the school district for the purpose of approving bills and payroll. And you are the only authority to transfer amounts between light items and the budget. There's very little depth at your table regarding that fifty-six million. Let's move on to early literacy, because you know, that's where I'm going with it. I handed out via email to the school committee members, three slides that I wanted you to see. If you didn't open it, it's all right, you can look at it later. The first one is showing balanced literacy versus structured literacy and the differences between those. As you have heard me speak, the curriculum is in a very difficult place in the district. This is not just about special education, this is a district-wide issue that I'm asking you as our school leaders to address. Balanced literacy, which our district uses and funds in general education, is not structured literacy. It is even more evident that our curriculum is not evidence-based, which are the standards established by the Board of Education when reviewing Winchester Public Schools District Curriculum Accommodation Plan for two thousand nineteen. Federal laws require structured literacy to be used in general education. The district gains grants to offset our budget, which explicitly say that structured literacy is required. Currently, funding and tax dollars are not being used correctly and you are the body who is responsible to correct that to the betterment of all the students in the district. There are grants and funding available to resolve this issue currently available. But we cannot access that funding until the district makes a commitment to change. Within the next slide, if you have it available, you'll see that literacy education for all slide from the federal government's laws. Lucy Cawkins, the author of our general curriculum herself, has noted that our program does not meet the definition to require, required for early literacy. The program by science has been proven to not teach phenomic awareness, fluency and vocabulary. The district purchased the curriculum and it does not do as it was said it was supposed to do. I want you to know, I think it is okay. As I tell my kids, it is not the mistake that defines you, but how you address it. Winchester was sold a beautiful flashy Corvette that goes from zero to sixty in two-point-nine-two seconds. But instead, we were sold a Corvette with an engine of a Pontiac V that goes from zero to sixty in eight-point-six seconds. If you know your engine will not do what it was marketed to, you take action. In this instance, for early literacy curriculum, the district has a strong case for product viability. The scientists have proven that it does not meet early literacy laws. It is okay, just like I was not a car scientist when I purchased my V back in the day. Our administrators are not scientists either. On your third slide is the latter reading slide. At the end of the day, fifty to sixty percent of learners require structured literacy to succeed. And all one hundred percent benefit from it. We are only focusing financial resources that are accessible or usable to forty-five percent of our student population in early literacy. You may ask, well, then why are Winchester's students doing so well? Well, one, we are an affluent town and our students get access outside of school to the. Well, one, we are an affluent town and our students get access outside of school to the world and experiences like so few in this country. I remember seeing a stat a few years ago about how many adults in this town have higher educations. Two, well, special education isn't doing well when it comes to early literacy, but that's a discussion for another day. Three, look at our library and coffee houses around town in non-COVID times and you will see it packed with students getting tutored. You will even see on social media now with amount of families looking for tutors. However, with all those reasons at play, you can see students struggling in our district. I can see it as a parent. Talk to fourth and fifth graders, look at fourth and fifth grade written work and can they spell? If the district administered words this way to all of our fourth and fifth graders, you would see that they are weak spellers. This is one of the key signs of our district not doing its job. I ask you, when you review this budget and all the line items hidden behind the scenes of this evening's presentation, that the school committee has the only authority to allocate funds and expenditures and transfer funds, no longer use taxpayer money to support balanced literacy and instead focus on finding and funding a systematic change to all of our students so that they can learn to read and write, which is really the foundation of public education. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Von Miering. I will, um, move on to, uh, Ms. Susan DeLeo. Uh, Ms. DeLeo, if you'd state your name and address for the committee.
Hi, good evening. Susan DeLeo, 24 Taft Drive. Thank you for taking my, uh, public comment. So this evening I would just like to address, um, some of the concerns I have regarding kind of discrepancies in the messaging that's getting out to the public. Dr. Evans and I have traded many emails since this summer and to her credit, she always responds very quickly. So all the parents definitely appreciate that and thank you. My concern really is in a recent strain of emails. On January 13th this year, Dr. Evans wrote to me and CCing, um, the chairperson, Brian. Quote, "We hope to bring students back for an additional day once we have completed the vaccination process for staff members." So my biggest concern here is if we're waiting for the vaccine in order to reopen in the fall, are we only gaining an additional day, which would qualify as still as a hybrid district? Further, Dr. Evans stated, uh, that how many staff members who will return and are able to get the vaccine is unknown at this time. If social, if social distancing and, um, meaning the space issues and the staffing issues are still a concern in the fall, which it appears that they will be. I think it's important for the public to understand that we will likely still be hybrid in the fall if these issues are not changed or are not addressed. We haven't seen a plan that has metrics in place. We keep hearing that there's, that we're hoping to open in the fall. I hear a lot of hoping. I don't see a plan and I understand so many things can change week to week, day to day, and so to plan eight months ahead is very difficult. But a plan without a written format with at least the ideas put down on paper and put out to the public is really just a hope, which is what we have been told. Parents at this point need to make decisions for next year. Prokial school, parochial schools are opening enrollment. Private schools, a lot have already closed their enrollment for next year or at least closed their application period. And this is the time that we have to know at least what the thought process is and have more clarity and transparency coming from our administrators, at least about what the ideas are at this point for next year. It's really unfair. We understand that it's a pandemic and I get it. Just tell me to the best of your knowledge, what you think it's going to look like and I can go from there. We're not asking for more than that. Further, I'd also like to address that, um, before December, people were asked to change their commitments if they wanted to from remote to hybrid or vice versa. And that we were told that we might get additional in-person learning time for K through 1 students. I understand now with case counts, that's not possible. However, I'm really concerned about the group of children who are not being reached via remote instruction. These are children who are specifically identified by the DESI guidelines, especially those in K through 5, who are supposed to be treated differently than all the children in the district. As Dr. Evans knows, I'm a mother of two such children who's learning style is incompatible with remote learning. They have also been identified as requiring extra reading support. However, such support is being presented in a platform incompatible with their learning styles on a Wednesday afternoon Zoom. The district has failed to differentiate for these students and I know that my children are not the only ones, that there are several children in their age group that are having the same problems. We really need to reach these kids. Reading is so important. As, um, Ms. Von Miering just mentioned, it's the foundation of all education. And we're going to lose 18 months. So I really just, I think the public deserves more transparency, apparently even in the, um, budget that was just presented. We just need to know and we can make our own decisions from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. DeLeo. I will, um, return you to attendees and I will elevate, um, Ms. Amy Poftak, if you could state your name and address for the committee.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Very well. Thank you.
Great. Hi, my name is Amy Poftak. I live at 230 Mystic Valley Parkway. I'd like to follow up on Heather Von Miering's comments about the general education reading and phonics curriculum, which is the teacher's college units of study, also known as Lucy Cawkins. My understanding is that this was a grassroots initiative brought to the administration by Winchester teachers. They were looking for a better way to teach reading and phonics because there had been no set curriculum in place for years. Their goal was to create a common experiences in reading and phonics for all of Winchester's elementary students. And for that, they should be commended. The problem is however, that the Lucy Cawkins program does not meet the federal definition of how to teach reading. For one, it is not explicit or systematic. Teachers teach a mini lesson to the whole class and students then go off to read independently or in small guided reading groups. In addition, the program's instruction uses a system called pre-cuing, which is a harmful practice that encourages kids to guess or use meaning and context clues to figure out a word. This is the exact opposite of what proficient readers do when they read and it actually undermines the phonics instruction that they are receiving. Additionally, there is little to no phonemic awareness or explicit vocabulary development being taught in these programs. On top of this, our assessment system, the benchmark assessment system is not a reliable or valid assessment and does not assess for phonemic awareness or phonics, which are two critical foundational skills. I'm sure you would all agree that our curriculum, our curriculum at a minimum needs to meet federal standards for how to teach reading. The research has proven over and over again that units of study does not meet those standards and Lucy Cawkins has said herself that her curriculum is flawed. States are starting to notice. In Colorado, which now requires its schools to use a reading curriculum backed by science, Lucy Cawkins scored so poorly in their first round of evaluation, the program didn't move on to the in-depth secondary evaluation and it failed again on appeal. Massachusetts is also part of this movement toward literacy practices and curriculum aligned with the science of reading. The state has a new initiative promoting evidence-based literacy that many districts are getting behind and getting grant money for. Winchester should be part of this movement instead of fighting against it. I understand a great deal of money was spent and a great deal of time and care has been invested in this and I believe it was done with the absolute best of intentions. But students and teachers have a right to best practices in literacy instruction and using the current curriculum is a disservice not only to kids with dyslexia, but to a large percentage of kids for whom evidence-based instruction is essential. As stewards of the budget and policy, I request you spend time to understand how the finances are being used to create an inequitable early literacy environment and to talk to outside independent experts. Please ask questions. Please follow the science. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Poftak. I appreciate your comment and I will return you to attendee status. We are in public comment still. I see no additional hands raised in public comment. Would another committee member confirm that they see no additional hands raised?
I do not see any additional hands at this moment.
Thank you very much. I will close public comment. And, uh, again, thank all the members of public who came to speak, um, both in public comment and in our, uh, budget hearing. Uh, this is one of the avenues for coming to us. We also have office hours and we very much appreciate hearing from the public, um, when we get the opportunity to. So thank you. With that, we will be moving on to reports and discussion items. The first report discussion item is the COVID-19 district update. And I see that, um, Ms. Murphy is here tonight. I will, um, elevate her, uh, if I can do it. I've done something wrong. Come up to a panelist, um, Ms. Murphy. I will first turn it over to Dr. Evans, uh, and then, um, welcome Ms. Murphy, uh, Director of Health Department in Winchester, um, when we talk about, um, s- uh, some of the topics here. So Dr. Evans.
Thank you, um, very much. Uh, I think I'll turn it over to Ms. Murphy to talk about data and trends around case counts. But before I do that, I just want to commend the, um, Town Health Department, Ms. Murphy, um, and the nurse, nurses for doing such diligent contact tracing. We worked back and forth all weekend, in fact, um, regarding, uh, suspected case of school spread and subsequent rapid mobile testing required a lot of follow-up, uh, work. Um, and I know that, that the town health, um, employees are working every single evening and weekend. So the fact that she's here tonight is really, you know, really, uh, much appreciated. We, uh, Jen Markham, who's our lead nurse, all of our nurses are deeply involved in this, our principals, um, and the Town Health Department, where I think we're working incredibly well together to stay on top of, uh, what are very concerning trends in numbers. As of today, there were 57 active cases in our district, uh, 18 active cases in our district, 57 active cases in our town. And that's a lot of active cases. That's a lot of people who are ill. Um, and so every, um, every case, uh, requires many hours of follow-up in terms of contact tracing uh, and follow-up by our nurses to be sure that students are quarantining, that they're appropriately supported if they're not feeling well. And that they, uh, are able to re-enter, um, as quickly as, uh, is safe to do so, uh, if they're hybrid students. So, um, I will, uh, let, uh, Jen Murphy weigh in on, um, anything that she'd like to share from a town perspective, from a public health perspective. Jen, I don't know if you were here. There was a question in public comment that I'm getting a lot, which is what's going to happen in September to our schools? What metrics will we use to fully reopen or will we have to, um, be in a hybrid or fully remote, um, school year in the fall? Right now, I just want to reiterate that we're fully planning to be open as usual. It's likely we'll still have to have some mitigation efforts in place, but we are planning for a regular reopening. But some of that will be dependent on the course of the illness and vaccines. And so, uh, Jen, I'm sure you have some thoughts on both of those. Also, I don't know if you want to speak briefly around the, uh, state proposed pool testing pilot or anything in relation to testing.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Ms. Murphy, thank you for taking time out of what is your, your crazy schedule, um, to come in and, and join us tonight. I'd love if you could, um, give us a, a little bit on the data and trends that you're seeing. Happy to share anything you want. And then as Dr. Evans suggested, if you have any opinions or thoughts on the, the pilot pool testing proposal by the state, I would welcome your thoughts. We certainly go to you as the, the expert in this area. So not putting it all on your shoulders, but, but we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for having me and thank you for the, uh, nice words, Judy. It certainly has been a, a team effort for sure. And I appreciate all of the efforts on the school side, uh, the school nurses and staff as well as yourself and folks in your office helping us, uh, day and night as well. So it's a great collaboration. Thank you. I do want to say that we did see significant spikes in cases, uh, community-wide post Thanksgiving and post winter, uh, school break. Uh, we did see, you know, increasing cases in specifically the school community as well, teachers and students. Our last case is now out of isolation from that surge. So the data will hopefully, uh, decline. That, that's my hope in any event, but we certainly saw a spike, um, from the winter break, mostly around, um, same issues regard from Thanksgiving where travel, um, people coming back and a bit of household spread as well. That's a significant issue as well. And then we had, uh, gatherings as well, people getting together. So the same, same issues that occurred over Thanksgiving occurred over winter break and, and unfortunately resulted in a lot more spread that we're seeing. I do want to mention that, um, there's a, a lot of coverage about, uh, variants to the virus, which is causing, um, more rapid transmission. And I just want to say that while it has been officially discovered and in a lot of states in the country, it was just recently discovered in Massachusetts officially, but I think it would be naive to say that it hasn't been here obviously long before it was officially, um, officially diagnosed. So, um, unfortunately, we're now dealing with that, but the good news is the vaccine is still protective against, uh, the variants that are out there circulating right now. So we are shifting our focus now to vaccination efforts. Our team has, uh, we're still obviously doing the contact tracing, which is so important to mitigate any spread. And that's going, I think, uh, very well. We're, we're getting on top of the cases and, and reaching out to contacts as soon as we, uh, as soon as possible. So the vaccine efforts, though, we're, are planning for now clinics in town locally. Uh, as a state, we're still in phase one and we teamed up with, uh, surrounding communities, Malden, Medford, Melrose, Wakefield, Stonem. And did I say Medford? I forget what I said. Sorry. So a, a few other towns to vaccinate our first responders. And that took place, it was very successful. Much of the staff of both of those departments, fire and police, did take part in that. I believe there's, there are a few people who chose not to. And again, it's a by choice. It's a voluntary vaccine. When you have an EUA, you cannot compel people to become vaccinated. You just simply offer it and hope that you get compliance with that offering. Obviously, as we, everyone knows that unless we all, the majority of us take part in this vaccination effort, we won't beat the virus. So it's, it's incredibly important that people read up on the vaccine, become educated about it, feel comfortable, feel comfortable with it and then, um, actually go ahead and get vaccinated. So our first responders took part in that. We're moving on, um, next to another category within phase one on a regional basis. And then Winchester locally will jump into this effort in phase two, which will be in early February. And so we are looking forward to holding up our own clinics here, offering it to our residents and businesses in town. And the first priority under phase two would be people with two comorbidities, people over 75. And then the next priority after that would be educational staff or educational workers. And I'm being told that the definition of an educational worker is anybody who works within the school community. Within that school building is eligible to receive that vaccination. So we look forward to all of these priorities and addressing those under phase two. And as I receive details and dates, I will certainly get that out to the community. I know people have been inundated with questions and calls and when can I get vaccinated? And I would like to be able to develop concrete plans very shortly to be able to get out to the community. So that will be forthcoming. And touching on what you were saying, Judy, in terms of the fall, I think it just ties into the vaccination effort, right? Right now, there are only two vaccines approved, one by Pfizer, one by Moderna. And one is, has been licensed for people, or not licensed, but has received an EUA for people 16 and over and the other for 18 and over. So there's a large part of our population that will not be vaccinated until I don't know when, right? So we need a vaccine to come online that is authorized for use in, in anyone under 16 to really, um, protect everyone else in our school community that we can't address, um, starting in phase two and onward. So it's hard, it's really hard to address that question fully without knowing when that will happen. But I understand the need. I, I heard people wanting sort of plans, you know, if this happens, but if that doesn't happen, should, we should go to plan B and what that looks like. I, I understand that. Um, and that I assume could be developed in some, some format. But I, I remain hopeful that another vaccine will come online so that we are able to take care of everyone in, in short order. But fingers crossed on that. What I know today is we will take care of everyone who is eligible and who wants it in the age group that it is approved for. We're hoping to secure a location. We're hoping to secure a location, which we've just about done. And we hope to stand up clinics three days a week for our public. And we will work on the schools simultaneously. The school nurses have been an invaluable part of our COVID efforts, prevention efforts. And I know they'll be an integral part of the COVID vaccine effort for our staff. So, thank you for that. Let's see, I'm sorry, Judy, what was the second part of, oh, the pool testing?
So, thank you, Ms. Murphy. I didn't know if Dr. Evans, you wanted to introduce the pool testing? And then, or do you want to just let Ms. Murphy go right there? Because some of it's, you know, what you have planned, present, and then somebody sort of heard impressions. I'm happy to go either way, whatever you'd like, Dr. Evans. You're muted, Dr. Evans.
So, just a couple of things that I know and what I don't know about the proposed state pilot, pool testing pilot. So, as you probably know, we've been investigating all kinds of options related to testing from last spring. And we've been pleased to see that the cost has come down for some testing options. But the cost still remains extraordinarily high, given that we would have 5,000 people per testing cycle if we tested all students and all faculty members, and if that were done once or twice a week. And we still have no identified source of funding for that, which originally, the estimate was well over a million dollars for testing. So, a variety of communities have tried different kinds of testing, either through fundraising or through available town resources. And this is where some of the inequities of public education really come to the forefront, where other communities may have more space, staffing, resources and funding, we don't. And so, any dollar that we spend on testing has to come from somewhere and there's an opportunity cost for that, as my economics professors used to tell me at times. So, it's a very difficult decision because you've got to be clear about what you're trying to accomplish with testing. Are you trying to keep your schools open? Are you trying to open them more fully? Are you trying to assist with limiting community spread? Is it a public health necessity for the wider community and so forth? So, I know that Jen Murphy and the, some folks who were sort of a subgroup of our COVID-19 planning and implementation team had looked into a number of different options for testing. Some testing requires a lot more management than others. There are all kinds of tests, there are saliva tests, there are swab tests, there are pooled tests. So, kind of unexpectedly and very recently, the state announced a pilot six-week, partially-funded pooled testing option, where we have indicated that we might be interested in that. We have certainly submitted an application. And then, the state is going to come back and give us more information about that. And one of the, we have a lot of questions about will everyone be required to participate? Is it voluntary? And how much of the administrative cost would it be able to consider? So, we're still at the very early exploration stages of that six-week pilot. And then, you know, the question is really, what does that gain us? I know that when some misleading information came out about the pilot, some parents emailed me immediately and said, well, this will allow us to open in full. In fact, it can't allow us to open in full because we still need to maintain our six-foot distance in order to end our cohorting. Those two things are the things that have kept our schools open and limited spread, I believe. And so, the testing is only one data point that really gives us information to sort of head off anyone who's asymptomatic, who might be in a pool. But there are, you know, costs and benefits to both sides of the pilot proposal. So, again, very limited information. I've had one webinar that I listened to. We'll eagerly look for additional information. But I didn't know if Jen wanted to add anything before we take questions about the pool testing option.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Ms. Murphy, just what Dr. Evans said. If you have any opinions, thoughts about what's being proposed by the state?
So, this was discussed at the Board Health meeting as well. And I just would like to say that the three individual members of the board supported testing. So, you know, although an official vote wasn't taken, obviously, it wasn't their place to do that. I think that data can be meaningful, right? If done appropriately, if we had, if we had high participation in this program. And I'm not speaking to people power or funding. Let's assume it was carte blanche. This data, this data collection would be meaningful if there was high participation done on a routine basis. I think the good thing about this program, on the one hand, is that you can create subgroups of people. For example, you don't have to jump in district-wide. You could do, for example, just the teachers or pick a school or two to do, to test. So, there's that, that's the benefit of it. I think pooled testing is the way to go and what I would have recommended anyway, and the medical advisory group would have recommended as they have. I also, you know, I think that one of the drawbacks of this particular program is the reflex testing or the retests for everyone in a pool who is positive. I think there are potentials for kids being out of school and in quarantine for a bit of time, longer than is comfortable for parents and the community. So, that's something to consider. But it sounds like Judy, Dr. Evans, will continue to vet this program and learn more about it. And perhaps Broad will be able to change their approach sometime soon. I know they wanted to offer automatic reflex testing in the lab of individuals in the pool. So, perhaps that can be developed over time before we jump in. That would be a good thing. Hopefully, not make it cost prohibitive altogether, but it would be an alluring benefit.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Dr. Evans, are you inclined to take questions from the committee at this point before you go on to additional topics? Or would you like to, on the COVID-19 update? Or would you rather finish and then take questions?
No, I think we should ask any questions that involve Ms. Murphy so that we can really sort of go off and.
I appreciate that. So, are there questions or comments on anything that Dr. Evans and Ms. Murphy have talked about? Or anything they didn't talk about that, and returned to school, that COVID, excuse me, COVID update that you would like to discuss? Ms. Bolanese, I see your hand is raised.
I just had a quick clarification question for Ms. Murphy. You had mentioned that in the phase two, in February of vaccinations, the priorities would be two comorbidities greater than 75 and educational staff. And was that, is that in an order? Or are the, it's just all three of them? I think you're muted.
Sorry. So, within each phase, there are priorities within that group. So, for example, in phase one, the first priority is anyone over 75 and anyone, any age with two comorbidities. And the two comorbidities you can find, there's a link on the DPH website. When you look at the phased plan, you can actually click on what those comorbidities are. For example, you know, cancer, diabetes, and so on. So, it's all listed out so that folks know exactly if they qualify. And then, the next bullet, so that's the first priority, those two categories. Then, the next priority would be early education, K through 12 stat, workers, workers. And then, there are a few more after that. Like, the next priority would be everyone over 65. So, it really opens up after that.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Ms. Berkstrom?
I just want to follow up real quickly on Ms. Bolanese's question because you also mentioned as part of that, Ms. Murphy. And thank you for taking this on because I know that you're doing contact tracing while you're now organizing a vaccination program. So, I know that has added a whole other level of complexity to what we're doing here. And that vaccination clinics will become part of your job very soon as well. And I guess I'm wondering, like Ms. Bolanese, I hear that our educators are going to have an opportunity in phase two, perhaps as early as, you know, sometime in February or March. Take advantage of that. Will there be dedicated, do you anticipate seeing sort of a dedicated school-based vaccination program for our educators to make sure that it's easily accessible to them here in Winchester? And that they can get it here in the town that they work in? And that we will prioritize that to make it happen as quickly as possible?
Yes, good question. So, we will, we will definitely bring the vaccine to the school setting. That is my hope, that's the best way, I think, to vaccinate the workers is bring it right to the building, as we do with the flu vaccination clinics. That's sort of the ideal model that I would like to replicate for them. However, the staff would be eligible to also receive the vaccine in the community where they live if they meet that criteria. So, someone living in Billerica could have an opportunity to get it here from us or in Billerica where they live, as long as they show proof of their employment as an educator somehow. That's a little bit of a struggle. A lot of this will be on the honor system, quite honestly. For example, I, you know, to make a clinic efficient, I, we can't, we can't sit and rifle through people's medical records, right? So, anyone presenting and declaring the two comorbidities, we're going to take them at their word and they can self-attest to that on our registration sheet. But the point is to get the vaccination, vaccine out there. So, yes, we will try to make it as convenient as possible to get the staff educated.
Vaccinated.
Vaccinated. Vaccinated as soon as we receive the vaccine. We want to do this rapidly. There's a perception out there that this is going slowly. It's not going slowly at the local level, I can tell you that. As soon as, as soon as it's received, the locals are getting it out. So, when you hear we want to get it in arms, we really want to get it in arms, but we just need to receive the vaccine. And I'm being told that not a problem. As soon as we place an order within 24 to 48 hours, we should get it.
So, our educators wouldn't have to wait to get it here in Winchester if their public health department had it sooner?
Correct, correct.
They can get it wherever they can get it fastest.
That's true. But we're all told very, very specifically and pointedly to not start another priority until basically everyone has largely completed the priority before it. So, now that we're all trying to move on the same timeline so there's equity in the distribution administration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I move on to others, I just want to follow up on a question Ms. Berkstrom asked. Would educators and school staff who are, for whatever reason, not in our school buildings right now, also be eligible? Either they are unable to work in our schools at the moment due to, for health concerns? Or they've taken a leave but are still educators? Would they be eligible under that? Or would they not be eligible?
You know, that's an interesting follow-up question that I did pose and I didn't get a reply. But I, you know, I will certainly let you know as soon as I know. I think it's important to obviously vaccinate anybody who is in person or face-to-face with others as part of their job, whether they're going into the home or otherwise for services. I don't know if that's a model we're using right now here in town, but certainly those folks as well. So, I will get back to you with that answer to that specific question.
Thank you very much. Are there additional questions from the committee? Mr. Nixon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I had some thoughts sort of on the broader discussion we're having with Ms. Murphy, but I also wanted to offer some insight on the pool testing piece. But I first just wanted to second what Dr. Evans has said about Ms. Murphy, Ms. Whitaker and her staff at the Board of Health. Jennifer, it means a lot to me that you're here with us. I think it's very helpful that we have our Director of Public Health from time to time at the table. Sometimes, whether we're asking pointed questions or we're just having an open-ended conversation, it helps us a great deal because none of us are public health experts, whether we're elected or, you know, we're on the payroll in town. And I think it's helpful for our community to hear these conversations as well. I was taking some notes, pardon me, when Mr. Leo was speaking. And I took her comments to heart. She says it's not fair. And she's right. I'm more articulate in a school committee meeting, but I'll be very blunt. It sucks, I hate this. My kids hate it, they do. I want to get back to normal so quickly. I also agree with Mr. Leo that we need a plan. But a plan isn't something that we're going to create in a subcommittee and just publish one day. We get there through having conversations like this. And I think we start with, frankly, like qualitative goals that aren't necessarily, you know, a date on a calendar. They could be things like percentage of vaccination. That could be a goal. We can't say when that's going to happen. The gentleman who's taking the oath of office tomorrow has an ambitious plan to get 100 doses out in 100 days. So, if you count that off on your calendar, that's April 30th. But that's first dose. So, we add a couple of weeks. The CEOs of CVS and Walgreens have said that they're going to be prepared to handle walk-in retail customers by mid-May. So, to the point that Ms. Murphy made actually in her opening remarks, there is no vaccine approved for kids 15 and under right now. A conversation that I think this committee should have with our superintendent and with Ms. Murphy is, you know, what appetite do we have towards creating a plan that someday would see us reopen schools as normal as possible with many of our students not having had a vaccine? So, I'm thinking it's teachers, it's staff members, it's DPW custodians, it's school bus drivers, it's high school students because they're age-eligible. What are the pros and cons of that? It seems to me if we have a very high vaccination rate, we can comfortably say we're limiting family spread. This committee and many of those who are listening in tonight are well aware because Ms. Murphy has previously described sort of the general kind of asymptomatic nature of our younger kids when they encounter COVID-19. But that's, of course, not true for everyone. I believe that our teachers want to teach. They want to be in the classroom and they want to be in there now. But they want to be safe and they want to be vaccinated. So, it's hard, it's frankly impossible for me today to say to Ms. DeLeo when we're going to reopen school, meaning give her a date. But I think we can start that process now that there's vaccines that are being approved to kind of maybe set some operational goals towards that end. So, I just want to be clear, both to Ms. DeLeo and anybody else listening tonight, with respect to the call for more transparency, I believe Dr. Evans and Ms. Murphy and everybody else on the payroll is being as transparent as they can possibly be. There is no plan that we're sort of holding close to the vest. There's no information that we're sitting on. I think everybody on the committee and the administration is very hungry for information. I think we had great attendance in that DESI seminar the other day about pool testing and a lot of good follow-up questions. I also just want to point out, there's this inevitable, there's so many things that we don't know. So, more recent studies suggest that those who actually acquired COVID-19, got infected, are showing a significant drop in antibodies after six months. So, what does that suggest for those who get the vaccine? Does it mean that they need a booster shot in six months? Quite possibly so. I see Ms. Murphy's nodding, so I'm not going to put words in her mouth. But if there's mass vaccination happening in the spring, you add six months, and that's when we typically open up school. So, these are the kinds of things that I want to know more about and understand if they can be safely accommodated. Dr. Evans said to me recently, you know, we can't control whether or not people get a shot, but we can control who gets into a school building. So, you know, we should have some conversations around what those expectations are. With respect to the pool testing, if I can sort of pivot to that for a moment, I thought the presentation was very interesting. I think there were, I think there were many Winchester parents who logged on as well. I got some interesting information, but I came away almost with more questions than I had answers. We learned that the minimum cost per swab was five bucks. So, that's nice, that tells me what the bottom end is. But of course, we're all responsible for budgeting. So, tell me, what's the top end? I mean, if the top end is 20, we have a problem. If the top end is eight, maybe that's manageable. Is that what I call a landed cost? Is that $5 per swab? And it's been used and it's been sent into a lab and we got a report back? Or is that five bucks just to show up at a school for a nurse to administer? What relationship does the cost per swab have with the pool size, which the state said could be as small as 10 and as large as 25? And again, Ms. Murphy mentioned the follow-up testing. If you test positive, right, through pool testing, the state recommends that Novavax test. So, who would be staff, you know, where would we do follow-up testing? We wouldn't do it in our schools because you're presumed positive. Who's doing it? Are they school nurses, is it Board of Health staff? They don't have any free time. So, we did some, you know, quick back-of-napkin modeling. And as Mr. Betancourt, who's the Chair of the Select Board noted maybe a week and a half ago, some dollars were set aside in the reserve fund, significant dollars at last town meeting. And there was some suggestion that that could be used towards testing. I would just add, I would suggest that there's certainly a lot of dollars there and they might cover what I would call like the retail cost of testing. But we still need to understand what that is. And we really don't yet have. And we really don't yet have a handle on what the operational costs are. But that doesn't mean none of us are thinking about it and asking tough questions, whether it's of Dr. Evans or it's of Ms. Murphy. You know, this takes some time and I think the questions that I have change week to week based on what I read, you know, in the newspaper or what I hear from the commissioner. So I, I would, I would hope that Ms. DeLeo and others tonight understand, I think, how seriously we all take it, how much we all want to get back to normal. I certainly do. And I think we're really working hard to get there. I, I, I just want to close again, Ms. Murphy, I thank you for joining us and sort of being a part of these discussions because I think the way to get towards a plan is to start a conversation about some operational goals. And that might include, you know, insisting that our, all, all adults in a building have had their second shot plus some number of days. I mean, if, if, is that reasonable or not? And we just start ticking through the process to see if it's possible to open up in the fall. Sorry for the long speech.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. I don't think there was a question there, but of course, Ms. Murphy, if you have anything you want to respond, otherwise I'll continue around. If you have anything you want to say, Ms. Murphy.
All right. Yeah, just one point of clarification. So we will be doing first doses and second doses concurrently. In other words, we will automatically schedule a second dose clinic for those in the, who have attended a first dose clinic. So it won't be as if we're going to get the first dose out there to all phases and then schedule a second dose for those. So these are, these are efforts that are happening concurrently.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Additional questions or comments from anyone else on the committee? Ms. Bergstrom.
I was trying to parse my comments into vaccinations and pooled testing. I, I wanted to return to some of the things that Mr. Nixon was talking about. But while we do have Ms. Murphy and Dr. Evans here, I think it's also appropriate to, to make sure that we're all sort of on the same page about what we understand about the pooled testing and the opportunities and risks that it offers us. And kind of the thing, some of the things that, I'd love to hear what Ms. Murphy is evaluating in terms of whether the state program, sort of some of the questions that Mr. Nixon was alluding to. You know, what are some of the thresholds that we're looking at of whether pooled testing would be a good fit for Winchester in the way that the state is offering it? I know that a lot of, uh, of agencies out there have said that it's sort of the last, the last sort of barrier or the last support to being able to have like a robust community response to the virus. We hit almost every other box on the things that you're supposed to do to prevent community and school spread. We have the six foot distancing. We, we keep, um, you know, we have an excellent contact tracing program that you're running that we're able to quickly identify and narrow down the, the positive students and staff within our building. We've been able to do the follow up testing with the state when we do have school and community spread. And we do have the hybrid model, which both you and Dr. Evans have collected data on that you believe is showing that is keeping our schools open because we're able to do all those other things. It gives us time to contact trace it, keeps our kids apart. So sort of, I can see where the, the testing is sort of the last piece to that puzzle that we could add. So I guess I'm curious to hear from you, what more information we need from the state? Besides just the operational costs that Mr. Nixon alluded to and, and the staffing costs. But is there a scale of staffing that, that we would need to scale up to, to be able to make this program effective? I, I guess I'm not even sure what, um, what exponential value I'm looking at that we would have to add to the town to add a program like this.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. It was a lot sort of there. Ms. Murphy, I don't know if there's anything that you can sort of try to tackle on that.
So I think that at the heart of your question, Michelle, Ms. Bergstrom, it gets at really the operationalizing of the program and the, the staff power it will take, the staff time it will take to do that. Because none of this comes with any assistance on the ground. This is, this would all be, you know, school staff or health department or whatever staff that we can bring to the table to operationalize this. So the state will provide for the first six weeks, the, the kit essentially, the, the tubes, the swabs. You know, we'll have to populate the labels, get them on the tubes. We'll have to learn software. And then we will have to track all the results. We'll actually have to get the test to the lab ourselves. So someone's going to drive them there. So, so there's a lot of pieces to this, but then there's also the reflex testing that the state right now recommends that we conduct through the Binax Now program or send individuals for individual testing. Except as Mr. Nixon said, you don't want to bring, you know, a potential sick kid back into the building. So, you know, where do we set that up to do that? And, and who do we pull from the school to, to utilize the Binax Now testing to make that happen? To test how many positive pools we may have. So there's a lot that goes into that. I haven't even begun to put a price tag around that. But I do know in terms of the staff right now and the, the school nurses in the buildings are already pretty overwhelmed. I mean, they help us day in and day out with the contact tracing of staff and students within the school settings so that we identify contacts in the schools. So that's already going on, not only during the day, but also in the evenings as well. They take that on. And so that coupled with reviewing, you know, PCR tests from people who are traveling, which is a lot, day in and day out, especially after a weekend. So I think they're already a little bit overwhelmed. So I think that it would, this, to operationalize this would need, it's almost like mini workforce to do it. And I just don't, I just don't see, obviously Dr. Evans can, can speak more to this. But if, you know, the, based on the current staffing, I don't see how that could happen utilizing them. Is that fair, Judy?
Yeah, a hundred percent. I think our nurses are working more than full time right now. And to ask them to take this on would just be completely overwhelming. So any implementation of this would require us to identify another source of logistics.
So, um, so what I hear, Jen, what I hear you and Dr. Evans saying is that this sort of requires an entire other mini public health department to be able to run just this program. I've heard some other towns talk about using volunteers for this kind of work, for some of the running lab tests back and forth. What are your feelings on volunteers and running a program like this?
I don't think you can allow, well, I, I don't know. The volunteers running a, utilizing the Binax Now testing is questionable. You have to be trained and certified by Abbott in order to do this. And I don't know, I mean, it's possible it could be done, sure. You have a volunteer nurse. I don't know if it has to be a healthcare worker, but under the auspices of a healthcare worker for sure. So those are, those are question marks, right? And so if you could dedicate a person to do that reflex testing, I think that's one of your biggest hurdles to get that done in a timely way. So if you have someone tracking the positive pools, you know, communicate to the pools that they have to come in on X date and actually executing that reflex testing on an individual basis, that would need a dedicated person for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. Ms. Murphy, I've been struggling with something that's maybe too, maybe pretty detailed. But I'm curious about the pools themselves one would use in a pool testing. It seems logical, I'm just thinking off the cuff, that at elementary level, it makes sense that class would be a pool, probably the classroom teacher too. Although those could be small, they could be eight or nine kids and a teacher maybe. So that would raise the price of the testing potentially because you might not have 20 kids and you might not want to pool two classes. Because then if one, one gets positive, you have to take both of them out. The same thing sort of works at the middle school. I can imagine how you might do the pools by team. Where it sort of breaks down in my mind is at the high school. And at the high school with staff as well, you wouldn't want to pool staff altogether because if one staff tests positive, now you've got, you know, potentially 20 staff members who all are out. You are closing the school down effectively if you have 20 staff members who have to leave. But the students as well, and I think about, um, I think about my own children that in a s- essence, they're assuming other people's risks having to miss school based on someone else's, um, uh, uh, choice of how they behave. Obviously you're not getting sick because of someone else, but you're accepting their choice of that you might have to be out of school for some amount of time. Have you thought, or is the pool, how we would even make these pools? Uh, it feels like if we can't come up with how we would do a pool at the high school, for instance, it might not be worth even thinking about at the high school. Unless there's a way to think about how you would do it, that would be a reasonable pool at a high school level or middle school level.
Yeah, you raise a good point. And there's definitely some creative thinking required to, to create the pools. Because as you said, you don't want to test, let's say, a group of teachers on one team, uh, in one pool because they could all be quarantined simultaneously. And that would be, that would be terrible. So I do think, I haven't thought through how to execute it myself. I think that's a school decision for sure. Because you have to figure out how to keep your, in the event of a positive pool, how do you keep your school running? So definitely needs some serious consideration and time to develop the actual pools.
Okay. No, that's, that's helpful. I am, I've just struggled with, I, I, I'll be honest, I've struggled with the, uh, I, I said father to two high schoolers, struggled with sort of that, that shared risk of your kids being out of school with someone who may not be as cautious on a day to day basis. So just, just something to think about as we move forward or potentially move forward.
And you may want to consider keeping your pools smaller. You know, so that the, that potential risk that you mentioned is, is you're decreasing your chances of that potentially.
And, and furthermore, again, uh, while it's an operational issue for a school department, if the pool that you do in a high school where the class is all mixed, could suddenly have your, some kids going home, but other kids in the school still there. So, uh, it's not like at an elementary level where if the class goes out, the teacher goes out, you can potentially have remote instruction. It's going to be hard to sort of, if five kids in a math class are now quarantined because they tested positive, but the other 15 or what so aren't, it's going to still be an inclusive class. We're not, the teacher's not going to go home. I just, I've been struggling with this, but I, I think there's lots to think about. Mr. Nixon, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, I, I wanted to follow up on that too, that we, we learned in the webinar. It was interesting to me that some districts have, they began pool testing with older students at the high school level. Some started with younger students. I, I wonder if, uh, Ms. Murphy, if you feel, so, so I, given how students present based on their age, given how so, you know, on a percentage basis, so many more of the younger kids are asymptomatic. Does that speak to you? Uh, does that make a case for, should we proceed with pool testing? Maybe starting, you know, crawl, walk, run, start, start with the elementary level first and see how that goes. And is there perhaps, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is there sort of a greater public health benefit? Because we're testing a group of kids who are less likely to present symptoms if infected anyway. And above and beyond the fact, as Mr. Vinalia just articulated, it, it, how do you even define a pool at the high school level? So it, um, to somebody who, you know, made, made the point, you almost have to have a, you know, a Department of Public Health within a Department of Public Health, right? Hire an army of people to do it. That's a good analogy, but I mean, particularly if we were going to do every student in the district. Because we have like 4,600 students in the district, but we don't need to start off with that. We could start off with something smaller. Does, does the way in which students actually present when infected lead you to favor pool testing for one group over another? Or is it just far more complicated than that?
No, I, I definitely think there are considerations to, to your, to what you just stated. I think if we had to prioritize, um, I think there are a couple of factors that we may want to consider. Number one is who get, who's at risk of more severe illness should they contract it? And that would be our teachers. Number two, where the likelihood of transmission is greater when you have symptoms. So if you're coughing, um, you know, it's sneezing, et cetera, you're more likely to spread the virus. So, so I feel like for symptomatic people, it's more beneficial, I think, to try to catch those cases sooner. So, so we're talking about older kids, right? The asymptomatic spreaders are, are interesting or asymptomatic, uh, positive cases are interesting. I think it's a, it's, it would be great to have that data and to find out by testing them and having them partake in this. However, if we had to prioritize, I most likely would not put the elementary school kids at the top of the list.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you.
Additional questions? If not, I believe the rest of this, uh, the COVID-19 update does not specifically relate to things that we need to, to keep your time here because you're, I know you're very busy. Am I correct with that, Dr. Evans? Okay. Um, thank you very much for coming. Um, you're certainly welcome. I'm not kicking you out. You're still welcome on the island, but, uh, uh, I will, um, proceed, allow Dr. Evans proceeding. Thank you very much for, so so much of your time tonight. I appreciate it. Ms. Bergstrom has, uh,
Not for Ms. Murphy. I just, I have a point of order for you, Mr. Vinalia.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Murphy.
Good night.
Thank you.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Mr. Vinalia, we don't have on our agenda tonight anything to vote or come to consensus on regarding the pooled testing for the state. Do we have a timeline for decision making on that? Do we know when the state's going to come back with us with more information? Or any anticipated date that the state is, um, has set for us about when the program would be available to districts? Have you learned any more since the webinar last Tuesday, Dr. Evans, that we were at?
I'm scheduled to attend a, another Zoom meeting about this on the 22nd. So I'll know more next Tuesday night for that meeting. We could potentially, um, put a vote on for next Tuesday, although there still may be some information. There's some conflicting information still coming out from the state around requirements. It appears they want us to test everyone in one school. And, uh, and so we, you know, there may be some limitations. But they are expected to come forward with additional cost, administrative costs, and that would be really helpful to know. So at any event, I think we should discuss it next Tuesday night. But I won't know anything more. I don't know a single thing more than I knew the last time we spoke. And I will not know until 22nd.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear sort of with the community too about when we were going to, you know, what the process was that I'd heard that you'd filled out the application and I don't, I didn't want people to think that it stopped there either. So that's, that's really helpful to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. Thanks, Dr. Evans. If you want to continue, I know that you had at least one more topic on the COVID update. So.
Sure. So the, the last pieces are continuing efforts to get students to have more instructional time and to bring some back for more in-person learning when it makes sense to do that, when it's safe to do that. This is an endless source of frustration. You've probably heard from Ms. DeLeo in public comment, as we've heard many times before, that the at-home learning portion that requires a Zoom, um, learning for students doesn't work for everybody. But unfortunately, I, I can't stress this enough. We are hanging on the edge every single day to keep our schools open. And that's mainly because we have so many adults who are ill, um, not necessarily COVID related ill, but ill or have ill children or are quarantined, um, or have personal time. And every day it's a battle to get enough coverage. And we're pulling in people who are not traditional classroom teachers for coverage all the time. And this is a, a, a source of frustration that, um, we don't want to tip the balance and bring in more students on days where it's not their cohort day to mix with other students. Um, and really that's the only way we've been able to consider bringing more students back. We're also running up against some frustrations with hiring. I know Lori Kirby, um, has advertised again and again with very few applicants, sometimes zero applicants. We're very short-staffed on our subs, daily substitutes, uh, building substitute, um, uh, ranks. And so, you know, sort of layer upon layer of challenges and frustrations. The reality is that every time I'm able to say to the community that someone was not in school while infectious, it means we caught the, um, positive case and that student is either a sibling of someone who's positive and has already been quarantined or happened not to be in school because their cohort was not in school. And therefore was not able to infect someone. And so the measures that, mitigation measures that we put into place to start the school year. Are even more important now that we're seeing so much of a surge in spread. And so what's frustrating to us is we haven't been able to kind of cross the boundary to say, yes, we feel comfortable to bring more students back. No, we do not. Um yes, we can find a way to bring them in safely. We have not been able to do that. So right now, our focus is on two fronts. One is uh finding out from families who'd like to switch models. And generally, at most level, is it's switching from full remote to hybrid. Um how we can accommodate them. And as I said at the outset, that's much more challenging six through twelve. And we have a lot of variety in class size across the district as a result of sort of kind of the very late choices. Of some families to go full remote right at the beginning of school. It means that in some cases at some schools, we only have two sections and they're very small. Um or we have three sections um and they're very large. So there's, there's kind of some inequity in terms of class sizes. That would also limit us to add students back from full remote to hybrid. So the good news is only about sixty families in the whole district submitted the form to switch models. About twenty at the elementary level, about twenty at the middle school level, twenty at the high school level, about that. Um and principals are working with them individually to show them what the options are. In some cases, because the class sizes are what they are, um at the elementary level. Um student, there's no more room for students to join those classes. They've had to go to another elementary school if they wanna come back in person. We said that this might happen at the time families made their choices. And so uh families really committed to being back um in person. Might have to go to another school for the remainder of the school year. And so um you know, as as Mr. Nixon said, this is terrible. We we, there's nothing about this pandemic that we like. That we would have chosen. We're making the best of a bad situation. Um and so I I I hear and understand the frustration of parents who would like their children back. But what I can say is that if we were to bring more students back, we'd be closed down as a school or a district much more quickly. Because there would be too many people quarantined and we would not be able to keep our schools open. And that's just the reality. Um no other schools around us have been able to overcome this barrier either. In fact, many, many have been uh in-person learning. Um far less frequently than we are. Many school districts have not opened at all for in-person learning. Um and so we feel fortunate that we haven't missed any of those in-person days. Uh and have kept the schools open since September without interruption. And I give a lot of credit to public health and our nurses um and our principals for making that happen, willing that to happen. So, but we are committed to giving more instructional time. So we're starting with K one. Um K one parents have um been given a questionnaire. Um that says, do you want additional support, primarily literacy support? This would be via Zoom, via a reading specialist or a reading tutor or uh some other qualified person. Um and then we're collecting the results. Um and then we will, on the at-home days, offer a variety of uh options. You can mix students in groups via uh the use of technology. The irony about the whole challenge of pandemic education is that we could offer. Um more uh direct contact with teachers with larger groups of students via a full remote model. Than we can with a hybrid and a full remote model together. Um uh yet, none of us would want that. Uh the hundreds of emails I've received from parents who are so appreciative of our efforts to keep our schools open. And have those two full in-person days, tell me that that, the benefits of that are worth all of the sacrifice in other areas. And so I'm really pleased that we've been able to keep uh the two in-person days. Continue to look at Wednesdays. Uh middle school is adding additional support sessions using ESPs on Wednesdays. Um and perhaps some other times during the week. Um the high school has opened for in-person support before and after school for any, on any day of the week. Um and so I think everybody is making an effort, given the constraints that we have. But given the surge in the number of cases, at this point, before our staff members are vaccinated. We're on the cusp of closing at any particular time if we can safely and adequately staff a school. Um and it's really out of our control in terms of the spread of illness. So at this point, we're starting with K one. Uh once we've implemented that, we'll continue to try to hire additional support for um grades three to five. And see if we can also offer them some sessions as well. So um Lori and Jen, I know that you have sat in with the elementary principals for countless hours to try to brainstorm. Some additional ways to um provide more instruction for students. Is there anything I should have added about any of those plans? That um you think is important to say?
No, I think you covered it all.
Agreed. So happy to take any questions about that. Obviously, I'm very disappointed. I'd I'd hoped by maybe March. We could have have a plan to have students back for another day. Um but the surge in cases just makes me very concerned and makes public health very concerned. Um and until we get over the hump of having most of our staff vaccinated. I don't think we can consider bringing K five students back for any more in-person time.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Are there additional questions or comments from any committee members? Seeing none. Uh thank you for the update. Thank you for all the work behind that. And uh uh this will be a topic that we will be re- seeing as uh in our, probably in our next meeting as well. So um with that, I'd like to move on to the next important discussion item, which is the fiscal year twenty-two budget discussion. Um obviously, we had the budget presentation um before. So I presume that there will not be a a whole nother re- redux of that presentation. But I didn't know if you wanted to kick off anything um before we open it up to discussion and questions and comments from the committee, Dr. Evans.
Sure. So I um I would hate to think that um the general public thinks that all the school committee gets for budget. Um documents is a PowerPoint presentation. Uh every year, we do a full budget book. Um by Cost Center that lists, I think, four or five years of data, comparative data. For every personnel and expense um budget line for that cost center. Um last year's is on the, on the website. You could take a look at it the year before. Um this year's will go up tomorrow. Uh and it go, a copy of this goes to everyone on the FinCom, the Select Board. Um the town manager and the school committee. Um it's a, it's a pretty robust um budget book. That has um uh you know, lots of information in there. Um and so uh I think the point about talking about what our basic needs are. Um the story is told because each school has a brief budget narrative about their goals and what they're hoping to achieve. There are the districtals in there, there's information, lots of information on special education. Um and those are the budget drivers. Um and I don't spend a lot of time in public session talking about those. But if anyone has any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Uh what I would say is um that the town manager is um uh looking at the town departments. As is the case every year, there's, continues to be concern about having adequate resources to fund. Needs on both the town and school side. And this year, we're even more heavily dependent on the chapter seventy aid. And seeing what the governor's budget looks like. Um and so whether will be asked when the town manager sees our budget. Um to reduce either by the finance committee or the town manager remains to be seen. And is um right now, I think there's a level funding uh estimate for um the school department's. Uh allocation of chapter seventy. Um but if that is considerably higher, which I fully expect it would be. Um then it it may, it may be that close to the four percent increase is affordable. So much of the proposed increase is out of our control. If we have enough students to fill a hundred and thirteen elementary classrooms, that's what we have to fund. And we have to cut something else, or we have to raise fees. So there are only a couple of positions, the um social emotional learning coach. Uh the additional operations support person and the dean of students, which has been on year after year. Um uh those things are are um, you know, obviously the first place that I would recommend you look. But the school committee has been very thoughtful in previous years to consider other possible cuts to the budget. Like transportation or um athletics or increasing fees. And so um it's really a a process that will unfold over the next several months. And not something that needs to be decided tonight, or even next Tuesday, when you vote your preliminary budget to send to the town manager for her consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Um I will open it up to the committee as a whole for any questions about anything budgetary. So seeing that, I actually, oh, well, I my apologies. Do I see it? Uh nope. Um I, so I do have a question uh for you, Dr. Evans. Um we have a a couple of areas, most specifically the the pre-kindergarten nurse for Parkhurst. Um and the associated, well, the loosely associated K to five teachers for enrollment. That sort of all go together, that if the enrollment goes up, then we have to move. Um uh do you have a sort of a a trigger? That if we need all three of those teachers, we'll need to move. If we only need one, is there a way we can sort of um. Telegraph to the finance committee and to the town manager that this is what we think we need if all these uh students return. But if we only need two of those teachers, maybe we don't need the nurse either. I'm just trying to think how we can um. To help them understand that that we're trying to cover our bases, but there is actually room to go down that we won't know about until maybe, maybe May. Maybe we'll know right before town meeting, this, maybe not. Maybe we won't know till August or September.
Right, I I can talk about the triggers. So uh in a district where we have neighborhood schools. Um it's often hard, hard to predict how many new students will enroll in any given school. Then pushing us to to get to the tipping point based on the school committee, class size guidelines and our classroom sizes. Um and the number of students who are co-taught and the number of students in specialized programs. How many classrooms we'll need in a particular school. Um some years, I'm surprised. Uh mostly, we've met our target and we've been pretty close. Um the elementary principals review the plan for how many sections we'll need. Um this is an unusual year because we do anticipate that our kindergarten and grade one classes will be much larger than usual. Um and those costs stay with us in subsequent years as those students stay with us. If we have students joining us in the middle and high school, it's more, they're more easily accommodated. Um unexpected students are still more easily accommodated um at the middle and high school levels. So the two schools I'm most worried about are Lincoln and Lynch. Um Lincoln and Lynch are schools that are completely out of uh spaces that I can convert to a classroom, short of, say, closing the library. And so um if we go above twenty-six sections at Lynch. Um say we need twenty-seven or twenty-eight sections, we'll need to move um something. Either a specialized learning program or the preschool out of Lynch School to another location. The problem is we won't have room anywhere else to put them. Um and so we'd need the nurse for the students who would come. So it's either, it's a full decision or not. Uh I think all four sections have to come. If we need even just one more classroom at Lynch, they need to come. I think they'll need to come the following year in any case. So it's just a question of do they come this fall or the next fall. And again, this is kind of a temporary move until Lynch is rebuilt in a couple of years, so. Um and so they, you know, they'll be there perhaps three or four years at Parkhurst and not forever. Um the uh, and we wanna bring all of our preschools together. We have the two preschool classrooms at VO. So it's possible, depending on enrollment, that we may need additional classroom sections at Lynch. And that would make our preschool move. If we needed additional sections at Lincoln. We would need to reassign a classroom of students somewhere else if we run out of classrooms. For some reason, Lincoln in the last few years has been the place where we've seen the most rapid enrollment growth unexpectedly. Even last week, we had twenty-two new students enroll um in the district. And many of those elementary students, even in the middle of a pandemic. Uh and so our families continue to come. Some families have left, some some families we expect will return. Um and so uh it may be another full year after next year until we see everybody back, once we're back to normal. If there are families who have to make a hard decision and want to enroll in a private school, because they don't wanna risk us being in a hybrid um format in the fall. Um they may take another year to come back to us. And so um so what will trigger it will be if we just run out of classrooms at Lynch. Um and it may be that we have to re- relocate a kindergarten somewhere else, say, from Lincoln. Um if the numbers go too high at Lincoln. Um we still have uh the music room that we can use as a classroom. Um but beyond that, the only room left would be the library, and I would hate to close a library to make it a classroom. So um so I am concerned. We have some uh rooms, a couple of rooms at Ambrose right now. Um and we have some space that we can repurpose at VO. Um but uh again, if we expand the language-based program at VO, we'll need an additional classroom for that. So there's still some, a lot of moving parts. So if I had to break out my crystal ball. I would say there's more than a fifty percent chance we're gonna need to move the preschool. Four of the preschool classrooms from Lynch to Parkhurst for next year to free up space at Lynch.
Okay, thank you very much. That's very helpful. Um, Mr. Nixon, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on on that note, I had, I had three or four comments that I wanted to share. But um one relates to Parkhurst and the request for ninety thousand dollars for the operations coordinator. So at our last meeting, um when Dr. Evans presented this as a draft, I think my comments at the time were. Food service, transportation and facilities are very, three very different animals. They take three different sort of skill sets. And I have no doubt that there's need for some support there, so don't take my my comments and suggestions to think otherwise. As I've shared with this committee in the past, um given the the tightness of available funding in the stabilization funds. Given how the capital planning committee bent over backwards three times to fund the elevator project, which is going on now at Parkhurst. Um you all will recall, we talked, we talked over the summer um last time about. Needs to put any, any supplemental requests for Parkhurst because the clock was ticking. I would suggest to this committee, there's definitely ninety thousand dollars worth of stuff that we would need to do at Parkhurst. Beyond the completion of the elevator to get that building ready, particularly the lower level. Um and I believe because any investment in Parkhurst would be a one-time capital investment. As opposed to a, you know, recurring operating piece. My preference, Dr. Evans, would be to sort of re- reallocate that ninety thousand dollars towards much-needed improvements at Parkhurst. But that this need for the operations coordinator still makes it into the narrative. That FinCom understands that it's not going away. Because once we get Parkhurst open and we start using it, then I think we'll, we can better articulate that plan moving forward. And maybe go to bat for resources with capital. So that, that's, that's a concern I have. I think there are unfunded needs at Parkhurst and, you know, we we tend to say, well, DPW could pick it up. But DPW's pockets are not, you know, endlessly deep as well. Um so I'm concerned about that. So that was part one. Um but the committee will notice, I think in front of the book, there's an increase in professional services. And I had just, I'd missed this if it was, if it was shared in this detail at the last meeting. I was looking for us to include a line item. Um for the uh permanent superintendent search, so we have resources for that. And I think that's actually exactly what Dr. Evans was thinking here. Um my preference would be we call that out as forty thousand dollars to support the superintendent search. I'm talking about the permanent search. And we can certainly be clear with the finance committee, uh again, because that's not a recurring activity. That any money we don't spend, we, you know, the understanding is we would turn it back over, um just as we did last time. I think that's a very comfortable amount, um given the kind of support we may need um in the search. And my last thought was, I wanted to go back to the uh summary sheet, uh which I think is tab two. So that's the sheet that looks like this in our book. Um um if I wasn't clear at the last meeting, what I was, what I was looking for in terms of looking a little bit in the rearview mirror. Given that there are conversations at the select board table right now about the need for another override. Was that we might add a couple of lines at the top of this, above the FY twenty-one current budget, fifty-six oh one three. We could include the line that we actually voted in January. If you, the committee will recall, we took less than what we ultimately voted. Um and then above that, we indicate the FY twenty school budget. Uh I think that's helpful as a, as a, to sort of frame some talking points about what we've been working with. Um looking back a year, as well as to remind people. I think that's helpful as a, as a, to sort of frame some talking points about what we've been working with, looking back a year, as well as to remind people the fifty six oh one three itself was a compromise number at town meeting, and we left some things on the cutting room floor. So that's all I'm really asking for is just two more lines at the top to change, literally changing nothing from there down. Well, aside from things like the operations coordinator, but that's just sort of where I sort of stand on it. I think that extra information would be really useful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Ms. Bergstrom.
I have, I have a quick question for Dr. Evans and then a couple of notes as well. Dr. Evans, last year, we, pre-pandemic, we were thrilled that the state, championed by Senator Lewis, passed the Student Opportunity Act, which was apart from chapter seventy and designed to bring more money to the schools. And I realize that the state is also, you know, experiencing the effects of COVID and trying to best utilize their funds as well. I'm curious to know, on a legislative level, I've I've heard some conversations that some of the Student Opportunity Act may in fact be returned to the budget and available to us. I guess I'm just looking to see if you've heard anything about that and what your expectations are around that funding and how that could affect this budget.
So I think that the Student Opportunity Act mandates funding. And Winchester was supposed to receive a significant increase in funding related to Student Opportunity Act. Many other more economically challenged districts were expecting millions of dollars to improve their educational programs. And so there is an expectation that that would be funded somehow. But I suspect what will happen is the governor and the DESE will get additional federal dollars and they'll just use that to support what would have been funded through the Student Opportunity Act for this year. I would expect the following year, that because it is legislation, that it is money that is due to districts and that it should be given to districts. And so I think, I think that we can reasonably expect a significant increase in aid. I'm not sure it's going to rise to the level of what we would have received for the Student Opportunity Act. And it's still very much dependent on the federal government and the new administration and how the House and Senate feel about public education and whether or not they're going to come through with adequate resources for us to continue to improve. This year, we had a little dip, as many districts did in our enrollment, because of the pandemic. And so one of the variables that makes predicting chapter seventy a little bit uncertain is what number they're going to use in terms of anticipated student enrollment for next year, whether they'll just ignore this year and kind of go off of last year. So there are lots of unknowns. And I am hopeful that because it did pass and it is law, that they should be funding the Student Opportunity Act. And so it's just a question of the state having adequate resources. I think with the pandemic, the the shock is that our overall economy is not doing worse. But we need to remember also that many, many families are struggling economically tremendously, even in Winchester. And at the state level, the priority has to be funding basic needs. I think public education is a basic need and that our students will need additional services and resources in the fall. And so I'm hopeful.
And as as part of the Student Opportunity Act, we had to actually tie certain positions or certain certain educational goals around that. That wasn't free money to spend either. Would, I noticed that several of the things that we had promised in the override, in particular, an SEL coach at every elementary school, we're not able to fund yet. But that has been a promise of the override. The dean of students certainly has been, both of the NIESK evaluations of the high school, most recently and ten years ago, identified a need for this position. And we identified it again in the override, specifically because of its focus on student life, the focus on, you know, the attendance and the behavioral supports and the, just the overall student social emotional wellness that we'd be able to provide and allow our other assistant principals and our principal to really be educational leaders in our, in our district in a way that they're not able to do when they have sort of these other concerns as part of their job as well. So I'm happy to see that in there. Do you, do you anticipate us being able to fulfill the needs of the override going forward past this budget? Or is that something we should be really trying to capture as part of this budget?
So the remaining items that were suggested that we would fund as part of the override, we're going out a couple of years beyond what our initial, initial plans were. The people who we've added in support positions for, to support teachers' professional development and coordinate curriculum have been invaluable, particularly during the pandemic. Our one instructional coach, that was a new position at the elementary level, making the middle school instructional coach full-time. Those two positions have been incredibly helpful and allow us remembering that we have lots of new teachers in the district, lots of beginning teachers, because that's what our budget provides for. That's who we hire for positions when people retire. Those people have been, those teachers have been supported incredibly well, but they're spread pretty thin. We have many hundreds of teachers and only a couple of coaches. And so that's an area that we promised that we would add that, you know, districts like Lexington have a math coach and a literacy coach in every school. We have one coach for the whole district for, you know, the one general instructional coach for the whole district. So we have one math coordinator at the elementary level. So when people say, what are the other districts who are spending more for people? What do they have that we don't have? Things like that. So in terms of, we've pretty much fulfilled most of the things that were planned for in the override, except for the instructional coaches, the dean and the additional SEL support. We've put in the drama at the middle school and the high school. We've added the world language. So we've added the kindergarten teaching assistants, the ESPs. So I think that a lot of the things that we planned for the override. The question is, is this the last budget that we can reasonably fund at a three or a four percent increase without another override? And that's really going to be dependent on other sources of revenue. How much does the Student Opportunity Act support going forward? What does our enrollment look like? What are our needs look like? We have increasing numbers of students who speak English as a second language. We have, you know, somewhere between sixteen and twenty percent of our students on requiring specialized education through IUPs or five oh fours. So it really depends on our student profile. It depends on our overall growth in enrollment and whether the town is going to have to ask for another operating override just to continue to maintain our district. And, you know, and I think we can be proud of the achievement level of our students, but I don't know that it's sustainable without additional resources.
Thank you, Dr. Evans.
Thank you.
Ms. Marchand.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. I'm not sure exactly what I'm asking for, but if you'll bear with me. I, I presume that this summer, we're going to have a great need for our teachers to come together to understand where the kids have been, where they will be when they come in. A lot of PD around trauma response. There, I, I envision that our district could do a lot this summer. And I was wondering, does the budget, in your opinion, have enough to cover all of those ideas and maybe innovative approaches to next year?
So I'm going to let Jen jump in on professional development because that's her area of expertise. What I would say is our overall, the amount that we spend per teacher for professional development is incredibly low. But part of that is because there's an expectation that every administrator, every coordinator provides a ton of free professional development to the district. Where you typically could spend twelve hundred dollars to bring an outside presenter for a workshop, we get in-house experts to do it for free, kind of a train the trainer. It's worked incredibly well. And I think, actually, Dr. Ellen Emma, didn't you teach a grad course today with somebody else?
Yes, Pam and I were doing one right before the meeting.
Right. So the fact that we don't have to pay an outside person to do grad courses and that our own administrative team just does them in afternoons and, you know, grades on the weekends and does, does all the things that are required, that really keeps our PD budget manageable. But we're just lucky we have great people who can do it. The, the need for different kinds of PD, trauma-informed, the SEL coaches have actually been doing that all along with staff. Jason can speak to that. They've really been very purposeful. And I see on our, on our, we have a, I have access to all of the email lists for each school, and I see what all of the elementary SEL coaches are putting out, that additional support, the training, the emotional readiness to tackle what's been an incredibly hard year. We also are planning to do some really intensive PD right at the end of the year because our teachers owe us some additional training time. And so there'll be a ready-made market for that. But even without getting paid to do it or having incentive to do it, hundreds of teachers participate in our district PD every summer. And so our teachers are learners, which is a great thing. Jen, in terms of funding or planning for PD in the summer, anything you want to say that I didn't say?
Well, I think that's a great point, and we've been thinking about this piece. That's why we recently did, Lori could talk about the MOA with the, anyone who's in a coaching role in the district to be able to flex. So for instance, if someone's in a hundred percent coaching role, they don't necessarily need to be here all of the one hundred and eighty days. They need to be here for most of them, but it's really helpful when we can flex their days and they do professional development in the summer when the teachers are available for those pieces and then have the follow-up during the year when they're in that moment in teaching and in the classroom and working on those pieces. So we are trying to, in anticipation of this coming, we've been trying to think of ways to budget-neutral, be able to shift some of our supports to allow for that professional development in the summer. Also, you know, WIFI has been very willing, once we've identified, you know, what we need to entertain any proposals that we bring to them. They are very open to different ideas on how we can support the students and the teachers through the process. So, you know, we have those pieces as well as because of the additional grant money we were able to receive, we've been able to pull back on our, our Title II grant is professional development. That's our professional development grant. We've been able to hold back on spending some of that money because of our other CARES money that's come in or other funding based on the COVID, which will allow us to have some of that Title II money in the summer that we wouldn't normally have. So between those different avenues, we think that we will be able to support both, you know, the inside professionals, which are fantastic because they know our district, they know our students, they know our mission. And then as well as bringing in outside experts when it's called for, because we certainly don't have expertise in everything, and sometimes we just don't have the bandwidth for it. So I think we have a plan in place that will support that this summer.
Thank you. And to follow up with that, it's more probably a combination of all of you on the admin team, especially Jason, because I envision that also teachers and so staff may need some mental health support, some well-being support. And I'm, I hope that we've given you enough of a budget in order to create group sessions or whatever is in, like, in their best interest. If they need to come together and kind of go over the year, it's been quite a year with all the changes that are expected to be happening with the new administration, just to let it all out and be prepared for next year and to be strengthened. So it's more for you, Jason, I guess.
Mr. Levine.
Thank you, Zina. I would just echo what Jen shared in that we have certainly given a lot of thought to to our, our staff PD needs and continuing to think about those needs. As, as you know, our needs end up changing from one, one day to the next as the climate changes. But we are certainly being very thoughtful about how, how to best meet our teachers' needs and our support staff needs.
I thank you all for your thoughtfulness towards not only the students, but also our teachers, our staff, our parents. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Marchand. Thank you, Mr. Levine, Dr. Ellen Emma. Additional questions regarding the budget? Ms. Bollniers. You are still muted.
Sliding back from my other monitor. I, I don't, I did not particularly have a question, but I did want to just say, I'd just like, I'd just like to make sure that maybe we highlight that what our commitments from the override were over these, over the last few years that we have not yet gotten to, which would include the dean of students and the social emotional counselors and coaches. And I, I was thinking that when Ms. Bergstrom was talking, and then also as Ms. Marchand was talking, with the tremendous need that we have for our students coming back in the fall, I think that those positions would be particularly helpful just to provide support. And we've been looking for these for many years. There's been a long history of this, and I think that we should just continue to call out that this was part of what we have really wanted and committed to.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bollniers. Additional questions? Mr. Nixon.
So I would ask if the committee could just indulge me for a minute. If we could come back to my, my thoughts about Parkhurst. You know, I'm just one of five here tonight, but I want to be very clear with the committee that there's no capital funding that's going to support opening Parkhurst in September that hasn't already gone towards the elevator, which is huge. And that the reason is that the next capital cycle, we, as you know, we get busy in the summer. Final rankings are published the first week of September and they go to fall town meeting. So we've got some beautiful space downstairs at Parkhurst, a bunch of big white boxes. So we, it, it's both the stuff that goes on the inside. And granted, we have preschool classrooms now. One, that, that might mean moving furniture from, you know, one school to another, except the whole purpose of moving those preschools is because we need the space for other kids. So there is a process we'll have to get into here pretty soon about sort of identifying what are the needs inside the building, capital costs, furnitures, you know, furniture fixtures, equipment, and then what else do we need to do to the building itself? Again, I just want to reiterate to the committee, that's going to take money. We would not typically fund that in the operating budget. But we did make a thirty five thousand dollar request of capital planning for Parkhurst this last cycle, and it did not rise to the top. That was going to drive, that was predominantly for some design work, as you remember from the superintendent describing some electrical construction to sort of facilitate, let's say, a more fulsome use of the building moving forward, all, all two floors. If we wanted to open up Parkhurst tomorrow for pre-K, we need some stuff. And it's going to cost something. So I, I strongly suggest that we at least put in some line item for that. We could do that tonight and perhaps continue, ask the superintendent to work with Ms. Whitemore to come up with a recommendation. But unless we said so tonight, you know, that's not going to happen. And if it doesn't happen, then I think the only other source of funds is going to be DPW. That's kind of a black box to me because, you know, they're called upon across town for all sorts of things. And we spend, we spend money and we spend time every summer getting our school buildings ready for school. So I'm, I am somewhat uncomfortable because I feel like we don't really have a, we don't have a plan yet, or we're not at least banking something to put towards some needs at Parkhurst. So I'd, I'd welcome if we could at least talk about that.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Dr. Evans.
So to put your mind at ease, Pam Gerard, Sarah Casey, who's the preschool director, Ellen and I have met several times, gone through every inch of the space and made a list of everything that we need to and made a list of everything that we need to address in terms of space needs. For every space and every room, the preschool would need has already been identified. Ellen followed up with DPW and building inspector again. Um, and then this last week, we brought in our school resource officer to look at things like security and, door swipes and security cameras, you know, to buzz students in and where would the entrance and where would the drop off and pickup and so forth. So we're well into planning for, uh, use of, of the space. Um, and now we need to quantify some of the, the wants and the needs and, um, see how much things will cost, like a small fence around the playground area, for example, or some repairs of some of the asphalt to the rear of the building. And a card reader on one of the doors and a security camera on one of the doors, those sorts of things. We've already provisioned for all of the inside classroom needs such as, um, smart boards, uh, you know, sinks and so forth. There are very minimal changes needed to the restrooms. We need to cover some of the radiators. That's a fairly minimal cost. So we've looked through everything possible that could be needed in the space. And now we just have to figure out how much of that we can get from the operating budget. Uh, and we have been trying to provision for that through use of, of existing funds. For example, the telephone system, we've updated it so that it can be used as an intercom in the classrooms, et cetera. So I think that we're in better shape than you think and a lot more planning has gone into this than you think. But we just haven't come out with a final dollar amount, um, and a source of funding for that, uh, from our, from our budget, both FY 21 and FY 22.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Um, one of the things I wanted to, I was waiting till we were done was, uh, this goes back to your question, Mr. Nixon. Uh, one of the things that this pandemic has shown is how lean we are with central office staff. Uh, we have a very small number of people doing a tremendous amount of work and that really has shown, um, I, I won't say it's cracks because, um, they have held up, you've held up amazingly, but at what cost? So I, I'm very uncomfortable with saying in a year that we're looking at having an interim superintendent, um, that, uh, an operations coordinator that I consider personally to be essential now. I, I see it even more essential as likely other members of central office will be helping to get a, a new interim superintendent up to speed. Um, that there'll be more work, not less. So I see, um, I continue to see, as I said at the last meeting, the operations coordinator, if, if I could, I, obviously there's a lot of things I'd say this about, but if I could snap my fingers, I would want to hire them now so that we could have the coordinator up to speed through the, the remainder of what will be our COVID emergency. So I, go back to your, your question. I don't disagree that we need to make sure we have adequately funded what we need to make sure Parkhurst can be used as a preschool. I just am really hesitant to say that that should come out of an operations coordinator in a year where I see that as a, uh, really it's one of my highest, um, uh, priorities, um, which is not to say that there's a low priority. It's just a super high priority in my mind. So that sort of comes back to your question in, in my opinion, but you know, again, we are a committee of five, not a committee of one. So.
Well, and then if I can just respond that, I think, um, but I want to be clear. It's not that I'm suggesting the team has not done any planning. I'm, I'm, I'm glad to hear some of what Dr. Evans was sharing. Perhaps this is, perhaps then it's simply just an adder to the budget. Is it not inappropriate to put in some line item? And perhaps request that at our next meeting, when I think we would be voting the budget, if Dr. Evans could take some time between now and then with Ms. Whittamore, um, you know, best guess at monetizing some of this stuff, um, and a sense of, you know, what's available in present year budget versus what we might draw on next year. I mean, I, I, I give you as just an order of an example, replacing the blacktop at Morocco, that was what, four years ago? I think it was $65,000. Um, so the, the money can go very, very quickly. I mean, if, if that's what we would do. The, the back of Parkhurst is basically totally unusable. Um, uh, it was not used when the VO students were there. But, you know, if, if the lower level is where the pre-K is going to be, it seems like the obvious place that you would want to fix up and get rid of the trip hazards and so forth. I mean, that's just one example. But, you know, we do have a large budget, so if there's some room there in present year, that's a good thing. I, I'd feel more comfortable if Dr. Evans might come back and say, we looked at it and we're comfortable and here's why. Or we looked at it, maybe it's a good idea to put this in as a placeholder. And as she always reminds us this time each year, you know, this, to some degree remains a work in progress. We can vote a budget. We continue to meet with the budget advisory committee. And between now and Springtown meeting, we may learn more about the needs at Parkhurst that might drive that number higher or lower. I, I just want to be sure we're not stuck with our hands in our pockets and, and we need resources we don't have.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon.
Mr. Vanelia, I just wanted to take a minute to respond to what you said, um, about needing the operations coordinator now. I guess I, while I don't disagree with you, I think that almost every member of our central office staff could use a full-time assistant now, particularly in a pandemic. I think all of their jobs are incredibly hard and, um, we have waited many years for things like a technology director. Um, Jen has been doing that job for many, many years, along with her assistant superintendent job. Um, so I don't disagree with you. I think there's a lot of central office staff, um, that we could use doubling up on today and would have helped us through the pandemic and would have eased the burden of our central office staff and the number of hours that they're working. I guess I'm, um, I have to admit, I'm struggling a little bit with adding an operations coordinator before we fulfill the needs that we've promised in the override, because those were needs that we identified for the community, for the public, that they voted public tax dollars to support. And we identified them not as needs because of the pandemic, but because they were, um, structural deficits that we saw within the system that were vital to moving the district forward. And those are still the remaining instructional coaches, the dean and the SEL, that I know for sure at every elementary school. Um, I haven't sort of scrubbed that list lately, but I know that those things are there. So, um, while I absolutely don't deny that Ellen, um, Ms. Whittamore is incredibly hardworking and could use the support, I guess I'm struggling to understand how this need rises above all those other needs.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. Additional questions or comments?
It, it, I just to follow, is it useful to the committee if, if, um, I mean, this isn't anything we need to vote on tonight. Is there consensus from the committee? It'd be helpful to understand best guess on what some of the costs are for Parkhurst and to have that before we vote a budget? And is that something that Dr. Evans is comfortable she might be able to bring to us?
So Ms. Marchand?
Uh, I was gonna wait until Chris's answer, but in that regard, since you called on me, in that, um, I, I feel like the staff, the administration has noted, the dean of students, has noted the operations coordinator, has noted these as extremely urgent needs and that Parkhurst is moving along well. And I feel that they have, we owe it to them to give them the room to make these decisions with our support, given that they've been doing this work and doing it well. And so I'm, I'm confused why at this point, we've heard about this budget, what, three meetings now? Why we're questioning the operations coordinator now, when we've known all along that was what Dr. Evans had put the most need on. I mean, we're getting the dean of students, we're getting, um, the SEL coach in this budget. How, I don't understand how people feel that all of those have been deprioritized. I feel like they're being given equal weight, but we're being asked to consider the desperate need for operations coordinator. So I think that my question is for Dr. Evans.
So I'll try to answer both questions. So I think I've been pretty clear, both with the capital planning committee and with the school committee, that it was not my intention to ask for an additional allocation to address the capital needs at Parkhurst. There will be some hard choices to make, uh, related to what is a need and what is a want. We've identified a pathway for students to go, um, upstairs in the rear stairwell and outside to the existing playground and some minor modifications to the playground, including a low fence. Um, that doesn't require that we address the asphalt, but in order to maintain, um, Parkhurst, um, at some point, and Ellen and I have talked about this, we need a, a more long-term plan, not only to replace the asphalt at the rear Parkhurst or the lower level of Parkhurst, but also all of our, um, parking lots and play areas, you know, uh, over time, over a five to 10-year period. When, and I know, having spent some more like three or 400,000 to, to pave a very large lot in previous districts, that that is a major expense and, um, and DPW addresses it when they're able. But I think we need to be more plentiful about that sidewalks and, uh, play areas and parking lots. Um, sort of a, a, a capital plan for all of those, as well as the interior, um, of the buildings that we typically put forward in our capital plan. So it's not, it's my intention to fund the necessary modifications to Parkhurst through, um, FY 21 and FY 22, uh, sources already identified in the budget. But I can quantify those for you if that would be helpful. Uh, the second question about the operations coordinator position. To be really, uh, uh, direct about this, Ellen and I cannot do the type of budget planning and finance management that we need to, because we're so involved in operations. And next year is going to be an extremely heavy need for the business office to be involved in a wide variety of very time-intensive efforts. The Lynch project is going to take an immense amount of time. The, um, other projects at our other schools are going to take time. Meg White is one person on the town side to manage it. We need to be very active on the school side as well. We have not four contracts, but six contracts to negotiate. Um, the business manager, uh, or director of operations and finance is involved in all of those and goes to all of the negotiations. That's an immense amount of time. I think that's on the finance front. Uh, we need to put out a new bus contract. That takes an immense amount of work, uh, food service contract, et cetera. And so keeping the lights on and the operation going, um, takes a lot of, uh, time and energy. Uh, and, um, it, I think that the director of operations and finance is, uh, spread too thin. We need help on the operations side to free the director of operations and finance to do more finance. And so, um, it just becomes so clear to me because of the immense amount of work that's been involved to get our schools open for the pandemic. But I just anticipate a very difficult year next year with all of our union contracts needing negotiating and several building projects and going out for new contracts, um, for the bus contract and then looking at food service. There's just a lot of moving parts and I, I think it's, it's, it's just become crystal clear to me, which is why I kind of proposed it this year, um, without, um, having proposed it in previous years. Uh, I think looking around the central office, I think is, is Ms. Bergstrom suggested, every one of our functions, HR is two people for hundreds and hundreds of employees. We could certainly use more help there. As you said, the assistant superintendent manages all the grants, all the professional development, all the curriculum renewal. We could certainly use more help there. So every function of our central office could use additional personnel. We have some very talented people who just work incredibly hard. But I just think for next year, the director of finance and operations position is just not doable with one person, given the tasks and with an interim superintendent who's not as familiar as I am with all the pieces of, of building and, and budgets and negotiations. So that's why it's kind of risen as an urgent need now, because it's not just getting us through the pandemic, but also getting us back to normal, uh, operations next year.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Um, additional questions? It sounds like, um, there is at least some desire to sort of get an understanding about, um, uh, sort of high level, what those expenses would be to, to be able to pull it in. Uh, which go back to again, the, the additional nurse. I mean, they, they all sort of come together. If we don't need the additional nurse, we don't need, um, those expenses next year. They're sort of all going to go together. And I would point out that we have, um, although it's not, uh, it's a ways away till we get there, a general capital projects update on calendar for next week. So it sort of would tie into that, I would think, to some extent. Uh, so I seeing no more questions, uh, we will return to this next week, uh, when we will have an opportunity to vote on, uh, the budget. Um, and have a, we certainly will have time for additional questions prior to voting. Uh, so thank you very much, Dr. Evans, and for all the questions. With that, I'd like to move on to the next important discussion item, which is the Lynch MSBA project update. And I, I've got to find it and I think, I'm sure it's, again, you, Dr. Evans, it always sort of comes back to you.
Sure. Page 16. So actually, you know, I, this is one of those times where, and I hope the people who are considering running for school committee understand this, that without the support of very talented school committee members, who all have different areas of expertise, uh, the district would not function nearly as well as it has. So Chris Nixon, some time ago, um, produced a schedule of deliverables for Lynch that was incredibly helpful, that listed, uh, the action, the responsible party and the due date. So we really have two things to talk about with the Lynch Elementary School project tonight. One is a vote, um, related to the, um, enrollment, uh, certification that needs, that you, we need to authorize the chair to sign. And I will sign and the town manager will sign. Um, but the other is to give you a brief update on where we are. And if you turn to page 17, you can see I've added a lot of check marks here. Um, we're just slightly behind where we originally thought we would be. And it's not anything that the district did. I think it's just the result of the pandemic that on the MSBA side, it took them longer to work on the enrollment, um, certification than they had anticipated. And so we are teed up to, um, have the MSBA vote in, uh, Feb-, early February, um, to move ahead with this project. The last piece remaining that we have to, uh, complete is the, um, enrollment certification. Uh, and so after that, it kicks into high gear around starting to identify the owner's project manager and the, uh, review panels and the designer and the selection, uh, then the feasibility studies, schematics and so forth, that kind of plays out through 2022, um, into construction documents in 2023 and then bidding the project and funding the project 2024, completion fall 2025. So it is actually a long project, um, with lots of pieces. Uh, but I just wanted to give you a chance to ask any questions you might have about the eligibility period, which the MSBA voted to extend until their February meeting, gave us another 30 days. It wasn't anything we did or didn't do. It's just a question of we were waiting for them to give us information on enrollment. And I think just like a lot of people, um, they were working from home and, uh, coordination was not as smooth as it might have been. So. Chris, is there anything that I've forgotten that I should have added about that?
Mr. Nixon.
Thank you. I, I mean, I guess I would just add a couple of things that, um, I, I wrote down a list of people that deserve some recognition here. Um, Winchester, you know, for, for, both for those who are interested in running for school committee and those just watching tonight, Winchester has for years cultivated a strong reputation with the MSBA as being a very planful, thoughtful district. We know our numbers. We know our stuff. Uh, we're on top of our growth. Um, we understand our history. And so for this round with Lynch, we have really taken pains to keep them updated. Um, maybe every three or four months with what's going on with 40B housing, um, you know, private development, subdivision, demolition, tear downs. Um, uh, we gave them an update after last town meeting when eminent domain authority was granted for the property, the three parcels at Washington and, um, Swanton Street. And we've been able to share with them along the way, which authorities having jurisdiction have, you know, rendered opinions supporting these projects, whether it's the historic commission, the planning board, the ZBA. And then further, how many units are associated with these projects? There are many communities that sort of say to the MSBA, well, we think we're going to have this growth coming. And the MSBA does not always accept that. I mean, in order to really have that taken into account and the purpose here is to get as large a Lynch as, as we feel we can to accommodate our growth, is to really, uh, as I said, be is to really, as I said, be planful, be thoughtful, to be just very, very transparent, share where every project is. And I'm just pleased to share tonight that the MSBA has... I mean, I think it's fair to say, isn't it, Dr. Evans? They've sort of twice bumped this number up. They acknowledged in a meeting we had with them in December that they were accounting for greater number of students associated with some development, much of it to hit the Lynch district. So that was helpful. And then we had some follow-up discussion with them about kind of reckoning around capacity of the other four elementary schools. So the number that either the chair or Dr. Evans will discuss here in a few minutes is no larger than it would have been. So I thank them for that. But in particular, I want to thank our town planner, Brian Zickelli, who has just been a welcome source of information for me. Heather Von Mary, who is probably still listening in tonight, in her role as chair of the planning board, has welcomed my phone calls from time to time and been able to give me some information. Mary Ellen Lannan, our town clerk, with respect to information in the census. Dan McGirl, who's our town assessor, and his staff were phenomenal in pulling together information on housing units. And we were able to, you know, discover that sometimes the information we have is a little different than what the Commonwealth has. And then Janine Varela in the building department was also very helpful. You know, it takes a team to pull all this off. So we just had a very high-functioning team, and I'm thankful for that. With respect to schedule, Dr. Evans, I think there are just a couple of things I would say. And I don't really want to ask this question of the MSBA until we kind of get through the executive board vote. There are certain processes with the MSBA that they schedule well in advance. So, you know, the big next milestone is the OPM, owner's project manager selection. We were scheduled for April 6th, I mean, months ago. And then the same is true for the architect and engineering team. It's not clear to me, given this little delay that we've had, if those dates are going to slip. In a typical project, you'd be able to claw that back. So maybe, Dr. Evans, that's a question we can run up the flagpole with them. If the April 6th date is going to slide, you can be assured that the other dates will slide as well. But I think there's enough, let's say, fluff in that schedule. I don't think it puts a Fall '25 opening in jeopardy.
In our last meeting with the MSBA, Ellen and I followed up with a phone call recently, and they said that this will not delay our initial schedule. So I think they're going to play a little catch... They're planning to play a little catch-up. Brian, you're muted.
Brian, you're muted.
Dang it. I thought I'd get away without doing it today. It's the first time tonight. I don't know, Dr. Evans, if you completed what you wanted to say. If you want to, at the same time as you talk about this, move, discuss the enrollment certification document, and then while they're at a different point, we can then vote that, which is an action item. We can sort of discuss that at the same time.
We can skip to that if that's convenient. If you want to look in your packet, it's page 29... 28, begins on 28. There's a letter that goes through the rationale methodology that they used for their enrollment projections. As, you know, Mr. Nixon said, they really did listen and take into account development. And you can see on page 30, the development information that they considered. They did raise significantly to 520 the enrollment projection for the number of students the school would service. I think it's important also to remember that, at the time that we designed the school, we need to be cognizant of special programs that might run at that school or space required by the preschool, which is not fully funded by the MSBA. That's on the town. But that certainly is another facet to the school that we need to consider in the design and how any of those decisions give us more flexibility for the use of the space should we need it for additional students at Lynch. And so we're up against a hard deadline. They've requested this by the 22nd of January. So I would appreciate a vote for you to authorize Brian Vernalia to sign the design enrollment certification. I will sign it, and Ashley Wong to sign it, so that we can be sure we get on their agenda for their February meeting, February board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. I would open up to any questions or comments on either the Lynch update or the design enrollment certification, sort of as one topic. And then we can, if we so desire, vote to go out of order and a vote on this design enrollment certification if we so desire. Mr. Nixon?
Just a very important clarification for everyone tonight. When the MSBA says 520 students, we just need to remember and kind of remind those listening tonight. In Winchester, at the elementary level, we take a number of classrooms and we multiply them by 20, and that's how we kind of calculate what the capacity of a school is. We need to be just very caught... We need to remind folks that, just like every district is different in terms of class size guidelines, the MSBA uses different guidelines. The MSBA uses an average of 18 for kindergarten and 23 for grades one through five. So the math doesn't really... The math doesn't match ours. So on the one hand, they're willing to support a building to accommodate 520. That is significantly larger, by the way, than the Vincent Owen School back in 2011. So that's good news, but it does not mean that we divide by 20 and say that they've approved a 26-classroom building. We need to get through the whole programming phase when we can really better say what are the pieces and parts that are in this building. And we can more confidently say, you know, based on our class size guidelines, how many kids we think, you know, we can accommodate. I just wanted to be very clear about that. Their math is a little bit different than ours, but it was still a worthwhile process in the end.
But Mr. Nixon, I'm sorry, Brian.
Ms. Bergstrom, go ahead. No, go ahead.
But Mr. Nixon, it does, and Dr. Evans, it does define larger public spaces, though, right? So the design enrollment does benefit us in terms of like the library, the cafeteria, the gymnasium. Those public spaces will be designed for 520 students, even if we have to work out the number of classrooms and the size of those later on.
You are exactly right. Yeah.
And I also just want to thank Mr. Nixon for all his work on this because his experience on past projects is invaluable to this committee and having that history and that experience really helps us as a committee to move these things forward more quickly. My only question on this is for Dr. Evans and Mr. Nixon, since Ms. Widdmore isn't able to be with us tonight, is if we would see a large-scale development that wasn't accounted for in this design enrollment or more large-scale development before we reach a final design for the building, is there any room for us to still appeal the size of the building to the design enrollment, to MSBA, and say, hey, we thought 520 was going to be enough, but we actually need 550 because, hey, these two developments opens that we did not anticipate?
So I'll jump in, and then Chris has some experience with this of a high school project where we did, in fact, go back and persuade MSBA to increase the enrollment certification. So one of the things that MSBA made clear in our last meeting was that this school is not designed to meet all our district-wide enrollment growth. And so they do take into consideration available classroom space in the other schools and would expect us to adjust accordingly. And so, but they did say that if you had something major happen, you should come and talk to us. And so, like anything, there have been some districts where, this is obviously not going to happen in Winchester, where a hotel has turned over to emergency shelter housing, and suddenly you've had 400 students registered in a very short period of time. I think most of the growth in Winchester is pretty well-planned, so we'll know in advance. But I think we can anticipate that if the new development plays out the way we expect it to, that Lynch will not meet our needs for elementary classroom space, that at some point, when we go back to look at Morocco, we may need a larger school to replace Morocco. And so we will go back and let them know for sure if something changes that's major. But they don't expect us to solve all the district's problems.
Right. But so signing off on this is saying that we agree with their design enrollment estimation, that it seems to fit our needs, but there is not a likely opportunity to change that. But if there was a major incident, we could still...
Yeah. I know. Chris, do you want to add anything to that?
Well, I guess I would answer that in a couple of ways. At the end of the day, every train leaves the station at some point. So the next really big milestone for us that would address that very concern would be the space program for the building. So the functional space program is literally going to say X number of classrooms, X number of bathrooms and specialist spaces and so forth. And if you take a look at that project schedule that Dr. Evans included in the packet, we're estimating that the space program doesn't get approved until November. So that's a long way away, right? And it's actually kind of disappointing that it's so far away. But we don't even pick a project manager till April. So, I mean, we'll be pushing up flowers in April when we get a project manager and then an architect sometime in the summer. And we're kind of doing site studies and we're not, I mean, literally just looking at the site and gathering information. So not a lot's going to happen very quickly. I think the... So the next big milestone, Michelle, to sort of address that, would be, you know, if something happens between now and November. The other thing that I would just point out, and I probably should have clarified this earlier, the MSBA's appetite to consider growth does have a limit, which is FY24. I think, is that right, Mr. Vernalia? I think that was right, and Dr. Evans. FY24 is as far out as they wanted to go. And even in those conversations, there was some acknowledgement that something is going to happen on Holton Street, even though that was the big development you all remember. You know, Xenus talked about that at a meeting recently, that we were shaking in our boots over that in the master plan. It didn't happen, but the property is now owned by Bain Capital. So something's going to happen. It's not going to sit idle. And I believe they even took some development of that into consideration. So I feel pretty good about how much they accepted. They also, in their process, they evaluated, this was sort of the last hoops we jumped through with them, they wanted to consider the capacity of the other four elementary schools. But they didn't want to take... They didn't want to back out all of that capacity. They wanted to back out some percentage of it. What that really means is all of our schools have to share a little bit of the pain and, you know, managing over enrollment. We're not going to convince them to go about this in a different way. So if that's going to be their process, that's the process. But they're certainly open to discussion when we have new numbers for them, and I think they would continue to be.
Great. Thank you.
I would add, I was impressed how open they were to all the conversations we had with them and when we showed them, excuse me, developments that we had some understanding of what they were going to look like. They took our word for it. They said, you've done all the work. And I think it was helpful that Mr. Nixon had done all the work. Sorry, I'm choking on some drink here. Trying to eat dinner, too, at the same time. My apologies. So I think it was clear that they had been listening. Other additional questions or comments about either the timeline, the project, or the enrollment certification?
I was going to offer to make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Marchand. I would appreciate that. And I think that actually we will need a preliminary motion to take it out of order, the action item.
I move to take it out of order.
I just had a quick question. Sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Bollniers.
A second, and then we can discuss.
Thank you. Ms. Bollniers?
Oh, so I had to step away for a minute, so I might have just missed this. But you were talking earlier about how this is being designed around 24 classrooms and that at some point in the project, in the program design step, that we could revisit this and potentially move to 26 classrooms if we perceive a need for this. And could you just talk a little bit more about that? Or maybe you already...
We talked about that a little bit, but some of it's driven by what happens in the district that might require us to need space, which was really what Ms. Bergstrom's question was about. The other is timing. So I think our next big milestone is the space program, which is November. So that's still 10 months away. So that's a lot of time for something big to happen, if it's going to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. We have a motion that's been moved and seconded to take the space programming out of order for vote. I would like a roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye, for the enrollment certification?
This is to take it out of order for the enrollment certification, so that then the next vote will actually be a vote on the certification. Ms. Marchand?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so that moves us to the enrollment certification and a motion, if someone's so willing to approve as presented.
I'm willing. I move to approve the MSBA Lynch enrollment certification as presented.
Second.
A roll call vote. Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Then muting. Hi, I'm here. Wouldn't unmute. Aye.
Ms. Marchand?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Vote is unanimous. Thank you for taking that out of order. It's always hard to sort of get the agenda just perfect when we're doing it. And thank you, Dr. Evans and Mr. Nixon both, for all the work on the Lynch project that's got us to where we are right now. Many other members of the team, of course, have helped, but they've spent hours and hours and hours of time. With that, I would like to move to the next discussion item, which is an update on the MCAS testing modification proposal from Desi, which is going to find out what page it is on, page 20. And funnily enough, that goes back to you, Dr. Evans. Funny how that works.
Funny how that works. I think this was actually a request of a committee member to have an update on this. On January 5th, we got an update on plans for MCAS assessment and accountability. I actually think that these plans are still in flux. We may get something from the feds that give us some indication of a direction that would allow this to be more voluntary. What I will say is we still continue to have very serious concerns about how we would test full remote students and how accurate the information is. The commissioner is suggesting that this is no longer an accountability test, but a measurement of student progress. And as Dr. Ellen and I would say, there's not a lot of connection between the version of the MCAS they're planning to offer and what our students have learned. It's not a useful tool for us. We're doing all kinds of assessments now. We'll get the results after students have already moved to the next grade level. It's just not useful. This kind of standardized test in a district like ours, where our students, particularly at the elementary level, score in the 98th or 99th percentile, is not that useful for us. So we're hoping that they will even pull back further. However, the components include modifying the competency determination. All of our seniors have already met the competency determination who are going to graduate. So we have some 12th graders or post-12th graders who actually won't be taking the MCAS students in specialized learning programs. But all the regular education and other special education students who are going to get a regular diploma have met that at this point. There's a shortened testing time. I still, in my opinion, think it's too much time away from learning, but that's what they're proposing. Accountability relief. They're not going to use it to shame or name underperforming districts or schools. And they're going to provide flexibility on the high school biology test. I just don't think any MCAS testing this year is useful for us. I'm hoping it'll all be deferred, and that's all the information I have at this point. But happy to, you know, entertain any questions and seek additional information as it becomes available.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Are there questions on this? As Dr. Evans mentioned, this was a member request, so I want to make sure we address any questions that any members may have on this at this point in time. Seeing no questions. Thank you, Dr. Evans. That will move us on to the next agenda item, which is discussion on the draft calendar for 2020-21. And look at that, Dr. Evans. You are...
There you go. So at this point, usually every year in January, we start looking at the next fall calendar for the school year 21-22. You have a draft in front of you. What I would say is what we're looking for now is kind of broad feedback. We're still in flux in terms of getting feedback from the educators around particularly how... educators around particularly how we're doing conferencing. And conferencing this year is very different from conferencing that we would typically do. Typically, at the elementary level, we'd have several half days where there'd be release time and there'd be conferences. Similarly, at the middle school and high school, there'd be a time period in January where there'd be mid-year exams and there'd be conferences at the middle school. And then additional elementary conferences in the spring. We've kind of taken a look at this draft and put everything in sort of one week, so that the rest of the month has full weeks of education with no interruptions. We've backed it up against some professional development time. We sacrificed some early release days this year for professional development so that students could have continuity of in-person learning. So we're just really looking for feedback, not a vote tonight. We may come back with a different version of this in a meeting or two, probably not next meeting, but the meeting after for a vote. The vacation periods, I think, will stay the same. The start and end of school will stay the same. What may change is some of the days in between for, primarily for conferences. I think Dr. Ellen Emma will be singing, singing with joy when she hears that the high school is no longer going to do mid-year exams and, and likely to do final exams in a different way. Heard from the student tonight that the students saw that as a less stress. And I think the artificiality of a bubble test where you just have a lot of memorization and, and kind of study and cram information into your head only to feed it back on a bubble test is not a useful life skill. So I'm pleased to see we're moving away from mid-year exams and the, also the lost learning days that company, the prep for those and, and the exams themselves. So I'm happy to take any feedback as we kind of look at this first draft of the calendar from the committee. And if anyone in central office, Lori or Jen, if you wanted to say anything about the calendar or any feedback you've received from educators in the meantime on this draft, feel free to chime in.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Questions or comments from the committee? I see Mr. Nixon's hand is raised. Mr. Nixon? And you are muted. It's not just me.
Sorry, sorry about that. A serious question to Dr. Evans and Dr. Ellen Emma. Can we and should we not be rethinking snow days in the future? Given we're learning today, given what we're learning with technology, certainly nobody enjoys being hybrid or remote for such a great length of time. But, you know, it seems like it was only yesterday, some districts were seeking permission from DESI to use snow bags, if you remember that term.
Blizzard bags, right.
But I'm, I, I, my, my understanding is some districts are really beginning to question the need, the need for snow days. And in other words, could a decision still be made? Fine, you don't go into the building, but we're still going to hold school. You're going to turn on your laptop and we're going to engage and extend some learning as opposed to making up the day in the summer. Is that, is that something that, you know, Dr. Evans and Dr. Ellen Emma, you're, you're talking about with your peers? What buzz do you hear from other districts? It's maybe a perfect example of like the way we've done it for a long time? And is this not a perfect example of something we should sort of pause and reconsider?
Mr.?
Sure, I absolutely do. I think we have all done a ton of learning through this time and that would absolutely be a perfect place going forward for us to use what we've learned during this time to still have very meaningful learning time on snow days. So I would definitely be an advocate of that. I think we're waiting to see what the DESI will say as guidelines going forward, because like you said before, they had allowed some blizzard bags and we were in the midst of putting our proposal together and they withdrew that option. So we're really not sure what they'll put forward after this year.
Thank you, Dr. Ellen Emma. Additional questions on the draft calendar? So I do have, oh, Ms. Bollniers, do I see a question bubbling up?
I was just going, this is really small. I was just going to say that some of the items that are showing, some of the abbreviations that are showing up under the calendar are not consistent perhaps with the key guide. I'm specifically looking at in January, the ERC six through eight. Of course, now I can't.
Yeah, some of them need, some of them are conference days. Yeah. So Frida, if you would note that, Frida, we'll just, we'll make sure that those all jive up.
And then could you just clarify, Dr. Evans? Did you say that in, that for January, I was flipping back and forth through calendars when you said, when you were addressing this. Did you say that going forward in January, the conference days will be for just the middle school only? And that the high school will not be having midterms going forward? Or is that just for this year?
So the plan is not to have mid, and Jen can correct me, I could be wrong about this, but my understanding is that, that we're hoping not to do midterms next year, that it will only be conference days for middle school. Whether they're on those exact days, the, there's Martin Luther King Day on the seventeenth, and then we always do a professional day the day after because we share presenters with other districts who are also off on that day. So there are two days already off on that week and it might make, make sense, since we don't want to interrupt more weeks in January to do middle school conferences also that week.
Thank you. I have a quick question. We have the first day of school listed for everyone as Wednesday, September first. Is that something, I, I realize things could change. There's sort of two parts to this question. Is that something that people can start sort of, I won't say taking to the bank, but people can start making their, their summer plans on that date and that we'll be working around that date as, as opposed to that that might become the fifth with the next iteration? And then my sort of follow-up to that, which is, which is sort of our, our unknown knowns, which is that this year we started ten days late because DESI wanted to have additional teacher training, which I suppose is possible for this coming year if there's issues with COVID that they want to make sure we have appropriate training in place. So two parts is, is can we count on that date? And do we have any inkling if the date might actually be later in the end because of something? Has state given us any inkling that they might do that again?
No, I think there's very little chance the state will do that again. Every, every learning day is precious. And so it was a pandemic decision. I, I'm fairly confident they won't ask us to do that again. I think the first is a pretty good bet. We don't want to go any later because then it pushes us with snow days into, you know, they end, the, almost into the next to last week in June. Gets very warm. And so that's not great learning time. So we want it earlier when possible. We start the year with a couple of professional development days. Then we ease into the year with everybody on a half day on that Wednesday. And then the next day, it's just kindergartners have a half day so that they can switch cohorts. Friday's a no school day, so we can enjoy a four-day weekend for Labor Day. And so, you know, it's a good way to kind of get a couple of instructional days in before Labor Day.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bergstrom?
I just also have one quick question. Has there been any discussion at the leadership team level about actually doing more half-days at the beginning of the year next year? Because there will be so many kids who weren't either in a building this year and now going into a building or transitioning between a building that may not have had the same transition. Just, I guess I'm wondering, is there, and this is just for the future, you don't have to even answer this today, but just any consideration of sort of changing up that first week of school this year to accommodate for moving back to a full in-person schedule.
Okay, we'll think about that one.
Thank you very much. So we will expect to see this in the coming weeks as something to vote on. And I see, before we move on to the next agenda item, I see a raised hand from Mr. Nixon.
So Ms. Bergstrom's question makes me think of something that's not typically on the calendar, but typically happens every summer. The grade expectations programs that helps our, our, our students sort of, you know, acclimate to a new environment. Those have been wildly successful in years past. We, of course, didn't do it last summer. It takes our, our teachers and our district staff to do it. It, again, you don't have to answer right now, but is that, is that something we think we're aspiring to do? That would obviously meaning, that would mean having staff and students in our buildings two, three weeks before school opens.
If we're able to open, for sure. I think we, we do a modified one, Lori, for grade six this year. There might have been some.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
I think we wanted to, but we couldn't pull it off.
Right. So, yeah, I think we're going to plan for a very robust summer program. A lot of it will be remote. Some of it may be in person. Some of it will depend on vaccines. But for sure, we want to orient students to the next grade level and we want to bring students back. We're really hopeful to bring students, particularly remote students, back to their home schools for celebration before they move on to the middle school. Fifth graders.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Thank you, Dr. Evans. Move on to the next agenda item, which is moving to our action items. The first action item is the vote on the MOA for Unit A instructional coaches. Ms. Kirby, I believe that you have some background for this for us to, for our consideration?
Sure. I think Jen explained it very well. We worked with the union to just take a look and the coordinators gave feedback and they're excited about this as well. It's just really being creative about their work year and being more flexible to allow for more in-the-moment professional development. So they have the opportunity to take up to ten days. They still will work their contractual year, but it could be spread out throughout the summer to allow for more professional development opportunities, just depending on the need and the moment. And there are just certain times during the year where it makes better sense to bank that day and use it for more direct instruction with the teacher.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Are there any questions from the committee?
Just had a, I had a clarifying question. I, is there a reason why the date for those who are going to retire, resign or return to the classroom? I think their date is June thirtieth. You know, that's, that's a contract, that's legislated for us. You can't have school past June thirtieth. But with respect to the MOA, is there a reason why it says that as opposed to the last instructional day?
Yeah, because typically, again, we're going on the contract and so the contract ends on August thirtieth. So we, those that are retiring and leaving at the end of the school year, that would be their instructional year. So that's why we just phrased it like that.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it does. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Additional questions?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Seeing no additional questions, I would welcome that.
I move to approve the MOA for Unit A instructional coaches as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marchand?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous. Thank you very much, Ms. Kirby. I hope that this seems like this will be very useful, so I'm glad we were able to do this. Moving on to the next agenda item, we already did one, so we are going to move on to school calendars, vote to approve school calendars for February through June twenty twenty one, and that is on page thirty four. Dr. Evans?
Thank you. So what we've been trying to do is take a very close look at each monthly calendar to ensure that students in both Cohort A and Cohort B have the maximum number of full instructional days. And so we've moved a few things to Wednesday. That would typically be on one of the other days of the week. We've deferred a half PD day that was supposed to happen in February. And we've moved the March PD day to a Wednesday. And so these are the calendars that we'd like you to approve so that we can put them on the website and then families can count on these days. The only caveat to this is we have not scheduled the spring conferences for the elementary level, which will likely take place in early April. Yes, we need to know whether there's MCAS testing and work around that. And so we'll put those on at some point. It'll be a half a day, release day and a full Wednesday for elementary conferences, all Zoom conferences again. So those are not on there, but families can plan around the other days. And it really does maximize the number of AA and A and BB full days for students. I really would like to thank Anna Paradise and the teachers union for being incredibly flexible on the schedule and trying to maximize student instructional time. That was their, that's always their goal. It's very, very long, hard days for the four full days that teachers teach in person. And yet, teachers want to maximize those too. So that's really to the credit of the union. And so I would ask you to approve this as presented with the understanding that it'll likely be one change in April, once we get the MCAS schedule for conferences.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Are there questions about the calendar or what's been presented?
But I have a motion.
Dr. Evans, I have, I have one quick question. I know it wouldn't normally be on our yearly calendar, but when you get down to the granularity of a monthly calendar, which is what we have here, do we have a last day of school for seniors? And is that something, is that going to be, given the pandemic year? Are we still imagining them getting out early as they usually do?
So typically, we can't give that last day until we have a better sense for how many other days we might have off between now and then. Seniors can leave a, a couple of weeks before the other students, but we can't really decide that until March. And typically, we have more snow days and yet the last day is still unknown, which is why it's not on our, our calendar. But I think if people, I think that, you know, the high school principal should start to put out tentative senior last days based on our belief that we can use remote learning days and not have to extend the school year. But we technically are not supposed to announce that until March.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a quick, really quick thing too. I don't believe we have the, the, the quick yearly view calendar that we have for a next school year. I don't think we have this school year up anymore.
We do not.
Attached to one of these calendars. Can we just put an estimated last day of school? Because I've heard that question a number of times. And we just don't have it published anywhere, like for, for most of the district. We don't have a published last day of school anymore.
Yeah, the, we, it's, it's, there's so many elements of the annual calendar that we couldn't revise it, but the last day of school is June seventeenth.
Yeah.
So maybe put that across the front. Yeah.
Yeah, or I'd like the bottom of a calendar or something, just so people know where it is.
It does actually say on the June calendar, in, at the bottom of the June calendar, last day of school, June seventeenth.
Yeah.
Is that on, is that on the website though?
No, it's not.
It will be as soon as, as soon as these are posted, I pres, I'm sorry. Dr. Evans, I'm trying to.
Go ahead.
As soon as, as soon as we approve these, they'll be posted. And once they're posted, that will be there.
Okay. If I can make the motion.
I would love the motion.
The school year calendars for February through Janu, oh my goodness, through June twenty twenty one as presented.
Second.
A roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
I'll vote aye and I have a follow-up question when we're done voting.
Ms. Marchand?
Aye, please.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous. Mr. Nixon?
So to Dr. Evans's point, we aspire to be able to bring students back at the end of the year in some way in their school buildings for something, whether that's a one-day thing or is it a week? I don't know, some sort of celebration. I just want to, I want to throw that out there. We're approving a calendar for June. It's just like, it's, it's the, it's the same old, same old, right? Everybody's remote, so I might suggest we give Dr. Evans the flexibility to tweak that a little bit as we better define what opportunities there are to bring kids back to school, especially, Brian, those seniors who would love to be out of school early, but any opportunity to bring them back in some way for some sort of celebration of their accomplishment would be great.
Agreed. I am not sure we need a motion for that. Just simply an understanding that.
Looking for consensus.
I, I, I'm looking around the table and I'm seeing consensus. So point well made. Thank you. That gets us through our action items and gets us to our, we'll start with the chair report. It is nine thirty. I'll, I'll be quick, but I want to, I have two quick things I'd like to say. And first of all, I'd like to take a brief moment, sort of a solemn moment, to recognize the passing of Mr. John Sullivan. And first of all, I'd like to take a brief moment, sort of a solemn moment, to recognize the passing of Mr. John Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan was a distinguished member of the community and the town meeting moderator for thirty-seven years. He served and led with grace. For many of us who also served on town meeting, he was the face of our town longer than anyone could remember. His service to the town is an inspiration to us all, and he will be deeply missed by all of us. On a lighter note, the school committee is in the process of planning for the hiring of an interim superintendent. This is a topic of conversation for future meetings, but I wanted to make sure that there was no ambiguity. We will plan to have an interim in place by July first for the start of the new school slash fiscal year. We hope to have an individual lined up as soon as feasible. There will be a lot more to come. So I just want to get that out there so there's no, no confusion of what were our goals are as we move forward. And that is all I have for chair report. I will pass it over to you, Dr. Evans, for superintendent report.
I think I've spoken quite enough tonight, so I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Moving to future agenda items, we have listed here a general capital projects update for one twenty-six. I'm looking to Mr. Nixon to see if that's a reasonable timeline or if that would be, prefer to have that pushed out. It would dovetail well with our budget discussion and vote that will happen that night. But I want to make sure that's a reasonable timeline and I don't want to have us rush that if we're not ready for it.
I'm ready. Bring it on.
Okay, excellent. I like that. We will, are scheduled to have a literacy report on one twenty-six. So that's the schedule to have that for our next meeting. But obviously, as with the general capital projects update, if something else big comes along, it's always possible that we'll have to bump it, but that's not our plan. We have as a future agenda item, the mascot logo update. I think most community members saw some emails coming out from that. I would remind the community that we, as a school committee, charged the superintendent with making a process. The superintendent did that, handed it off to the, the team that's working on that. We are not hands-on that right now. It'll come back to us with a recommendation and we will make a final vote as far as how to move forward. So it's right now in the, the working group's hands and we expect an update in the, the not distant future. We also have a vote on the budget.
Mr. Vanady, if the community wants to engage in that process, how would they do that?
There's an email and it's gonna, you had to ask me.
I didn't remember either. I thought, no.
I, I could look it up, but I don't want to belabor the point. I know that the, uh, uh, school community has been reached out with numerous emails regarding this. And I don't have.
Through Mr. Mahoney at the high.
Through Mr. Mahoney. So while there's a separate email specifically for the, this, I, without throwing Mr. Mahoney under the bus to getting ten thousand emails, he would be the contact to reach out to. So I, I wish I had that email readily here. I, I could look, but I don't think I'm going to find it quick enough.
Me either. I was hoping somebody else had it.
We also have the budget vote, which is not here, but that's, that's at our next meeting. Future meeting dates, we have January twenty-sixth, which is a week from today at six P M. February second at nine thirty A M. And then February twenty-third at six P M. And Ms. Bollniers, I see you may have the email?
Have the email.
Okay, thank you.
The W H S rebranding team, and it was last sent on January eleventh.
Okay, so W H S rebranding team at Winchester P S dot org?
Oh, well, I just looked at the name. It was on the email.
So for those who do not have kids in the school right now but are following our meeting intently, it's good that they know that it's W P S dot, Winchester P S dot org. Unless there's anything else, I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
A roll call vote. Ms. Marchand?
Yes, aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you, everyone, for what was a lengthy meeting, but lots of God accomplished. I'll see you all a week from tonight. Same place. Bye-bye.